Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. And Lisa, Commissioner Campbell-Lace is going to read the agenda here. I'm still under the weather a little bit, and I apologize for coughing and hacking all over the place here, but...
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. We are going to start with roll call. Call the meeting order. We're walking.
Mr. Cantalma-Masoch.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Ms. Franchco.
Okay, so workshop agenda with regularly, regular meetings scheduled at February 14th, 2024. We are going to change it up a little bit. I know that we have the Saint Vincent de Paul here, representative from Saint Vincent de Paul. We have a letter of support on here. I want to remember which number that is, Lisa.
I know that, oh, I've got to look.
Okay. Bear with us one second. Nineteen?
Yep.
Let me just see here real quick. Okay, if everyone can bear with us, we're going to have, so that she can get out of here. Number nineteen, to execute a letter of support for the Society of Saint Vincent de Paul's Visionary Initiative to Establish a New Hunger and Community Education Center in the Community. The Organization's Commitment to Addressing Hunger and Providing Essential Community Education and Workforce Development is truly commendable, and we authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of County Commissioners, to execute this letter. This action is for the request of Ms. Darlene Jones', Chief Executive Officer. We have her here with us today. Darlene, did you want to speak to it a little bit and talk about?
Sure.
I mean, give us the packet, but let us know exactly what we're dealing with here. We know that there's going to be a larger expansion, so...
There is, absolutely. So we have actually, Saint Vincent de Paul has submitted a funding request to this capital biennial budget, biennial budget for '25, '26, requesting funding for the new Hunger and Community Education Center. It'll be built on the properties surrounding the current dining hall that'll allow us to have access where 128 people be seated and fed every day, but also moves all of our programs, our back-to-back workforce development, job skills training programs into that building as well. It also allows the community right there in that area on Miles Road to allow all community organizations and groups to have a place to meet and utilize in the community as well. We currently have Representative Tantucci, we have his support. It's already been submitted to the House and the Senate, so it ends up being submitted in March to the Senate side. And at that point, they've asked that we include a letter of support from our local government officials.
Sure, sure. So this is basically just going to allow you to do more of what you're already doing and expand your services.
Absolutely, yeah. We've outgrown every single building on our campus.
We're proud to execute the letter, and I'm sure it'll be unanimous tomorrow. Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're good, thank you. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't have any new...
Commissioner, you or you are?
George Sarkis.
Okay. Commissioner, we just skip ahead to the section where the engineer hires an attorney for the Kimberly-Clark project, and then the next item is for us to hire an attorney.
What number is that, Commissioner?
That's what I'm looking for.
And it's a thirty-seven and thirty...
Thirty-six, thirty-seven.
Thirty-six and thirty-seven.
Okay. Maybe you could start out and read thirty-six. Let's do that one first, and then we'll go right to thirty-seven.
One second. Okay, Agenda Item Number Thirty-six, thirty-six, to authorize the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners to join with the Trumbull County Prosecuting Attorney to file an application with the Trumbull County Court of Common Pleas for the appointment of Attorney Thomas Nader from the law firm of Nader and Nader as legal counsel for the Trumbull County engineer in connection with legal advice and counsel as to the engineer's statutory duties relating to the proposed Kimberly-Clark project in Trumbull County, including all related legal actions. We know that the engineer...
The engineer has his own counsel. Now, we are going to need our counsel, as told to us by the prosecutor in a couple of past meetings ago. Howland is also involved in this, so of course, there's a big conflict there that, you know, we can't use our prosecutor's office to do this, and this is more of a specified field in municipal government. I have Mr. Attorney George Sarkis with us here today. He was recommended to us by the Port Authority and Chamber Commerce. I did some other research from other municipalities. This is what they do for a living with their firm, and I'm glad that Prosecutor Danzo's here with us today. And what I wanted to do is give an opportunity for him to talk about his qualifications and kind of a loose-knit interview before we pick who we were going to have. This seems something that, with the scope of what's going to need done with that, there could possibly be road closure, could possibly annexation, could possibly be an enterprise zone of some sort and a jet.
Yes.
We need to have somebody to represent the best interest of Trumbull County.
Absolutely.
And that's where I brought him in, to see if we can interview him.
Absolutely.
What is yours?
Sarkis, what is yours?
Do you have a microphone?
Thank you. I'm George Sarkis with the law firm of Retsal Mandris. We're an Ohio-based law firm. I'm located in Akron office. We have five offices in Ohio, and we have a public law practice group, and I've been a part of that public law, public finance practice group since we founded it back in the late eighties, early nineties, and have practiced in that area ever since. I am joined in this practice by two of my partners who have particular expertise in the areas that Commissioner Malloy and I spoke about on the phone. Those attorneys are Justin Markey, who's been with me in the practice for over fifteen years, and Jason Dotson, one of my partners, who is not only a practicing attorney for many years, but former chief of staff of Sona County. So this is what we do for a living on a full-time basis. We practice throughout the state of Ohio, both finance area and public law area. We have experience with jets. In fact, one of our clients established the first jet in the state of Ohio, and law crafted, it would be adoption of that. That was one of the areas that... And our practice is very much focused on economic development matters. We have done economic development all over the state, representing various public entities or port authorities in Cleveland Tiger County, Dayton Montgomery County, Columbus Franklin County, Sona County, Portage County, Medina County, Loop County, and in addition to working with the Western Reserve Board of Authorities. We have quite a bit of experience there in addition to having represented Jobs Ohio and the Ohio Department of Development in economic development there. Happy to answer any questions.
So you're aware, Mr. Sarkis, that tomorrow, Commissioner Cantalma-Masoch, that this plot of land sits kind of juxtaposed between like four different communities and four different political subdivisions? A jet will probably be imminent, I'm assuming, because that's... And I'm not saying that it won't be, but it looks like we're heading that way.
Yeah.
But how many jets have you been a part of in your practice?
Well, we've been, we've, oh geez, we've been involved in economic development deals with a lot of jets that were part of the overall incentive packages that were provided. As I said, we've been involved in jets on transactions in the city of Akron. I believe Akron has jet arrangements with four or five of the other political subdivisions around it. We've been involved with jets on economic development transactions, actually a number of them in Portage County, where Portage County unincorporated areas have participated with projects that have crossed jurisdictional borders.
Because we could be looking at anything from drainage improvements to road widensings to different, you know, obviously, the whole thing, because talking about thousands of jobs and a major investment in our county, as you know. I'm glad that Commissioner Malloy has done his due diligence and brought you here today. Bill, do you have anything to add as our legal counsel on that?
No, this is Bill Danzo from the county prosecutor's office. All I say is I am glad the commissioners are exploring this, and I think it's a really good thing to have someone that has significant economic development experience onboard, because this is potentially a very big deal for Trumbull County. So I think you guys are on the right track in your exploration.
Thank you, Bill.
George, Nader and Nader went with the engineer's office for two twenty-five an hour. Do you have a price worked out?
Typically, we provide an hourly rate for our municipal economic development deals at $300 an hour, which is a $150 discount from our normal rate.
But we'd be willing to... Let's put it this way, the way I have it set up would be as long as you guys believe that the commissioners and planning commission could be represented together without conflict, it would be fine for one person to represent both.
Ideally, we'd like you to represent both the project and the planning commission in this endeavor. When we had something similar to this on a different project, it was both of us together that was represented.
Yes, yes.
So I don't foresee any conflict with the planning commission, but I don't know if they're here today, but they're separately, separate entity in a lot of ways, so we would have to check with them.
We've entered into engagements where we've, many times, where we've represented multiple entities. I mean, as long as everyone understands it, and there's no conflict of interest, and everybody is on the same path.
Just because they're going to be an integral part of this as well, obviously.
I understand.
Would everybody, Bill, if we utilized him for this, would he also be able to be utilized for the TID and representing the TID, being at his own separate entity board? Would that be a conflict with the Board of Commissioners?
We are already separately looking at attorneys. That's already in process, just as an FYI.
Gotcha.
I don't remember if this was on that list or not, but we already had, Nick has been working on that.
Okay.
As we were authorized to do in, I think, November meeting.
So just to be clear, the amount was per hour?
Our typical government rate is $300.
Well, as I'm sure you've talked to Commissioner Malloy, it's going to be imperative, and as Bill Danzo mentioned, that we have somebody. This is a more complex issue than just plopping down a company right here in Trumbull County. There's a lot of different complexities that we have to work out, so we do need legal counsel. Appreciate you being here. I'm ready to move on tomorrow. I know Bill...
I am too, and I'm looking at the thing of the template here. The only thing we really need to plug in here is what the hourly rate is. It is in the agenda thing. Would you be okay with two seventy-five?
Yes.
You okay with two seventy-five?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. I'd make the recommendation to decide with this. They said, I did the background check. We are going to be working with, the port authority's been the lead on this Kimberly-Clark project from day one.
Yes.
They know what needs done, everything, every detail of, to make this deal fit with Kimberly-Clark Corporation. They would not have recommended him had they not felt that he could fulfill the obligations that we need as accounting, even though the port is their own entity under us. You know, he did check to make sure there was no conflict with business dealings he's done with the port before and with county, and it seems like we're clear on that stuff. And he, Akron is very similar to what we're doing here. With his experience that he had in Akron, the suburbs around Akron, that corridor, the things they've done there are going to resemble a lot of what we have going on here. I think that's better than finding someone out of Cincinnati or Columbus to have dealt with things there. This isn't far travel-wise either, be hands-on and onsite, rather than bringing someone up from Columbus or Dayton, Cincinnati. I think we were kind of limited to the Cleveland-Acron market for that, and really, we had to get out of Mahoney and Trumbull County to get the specialty type of work that they provide. We're in that growing phase now that they've already experienced over there. You know, that corridor there, seventy-seven, between Canton and Akron has been, you know, the kind of the last hotbed in Ohio, and now it's shifting our way, hopefully, with a lot of that activity. So I think he's a perfect fit for it, and I'd recommend to that we...
Real quick, you mentioned two other partners. Would we be dealing directly with you, or would we be dealing with...
I would be dealing with me, and, you know, we usually have one lawyer who's the contact person, unlike other lawyers.
And you've had somewhat of briefing on what the project is a little bit from...
Brief, a brief briefing, yes. Yeah. It sounds very similar projects we handle.
Yeah. I guess this is what we need, if you could exchange the information over with our clerk so she can get the spelling correctly and get the contact information through and everything she needs to do to jump the contract, or is our contract would be with the prosecutor's office and him, or with us and him, or how do we handle that?
Generally, it would come over to you guys. If you want us to look at anything, we certainly would, but it would come over to you guys.
Okay.
Do you like, or do you prepare that, or do you want us to submit to you our engagement?
Normally, we would accept and review yours if that's okay with you.
Absolutely, we'll get that too.
And then we get you on one of the next meetings they have of the, when the group gets together to talk about what needs done. And are you familiar, Nader and Nader is the one for the engineer, so I'm sure you've got some familiarity with them in the field that you're in.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And you can hang out and listen if you want for a bit, or you can leave, and just don't start the clock yet.
Yes, yes. Okay. Okay, Commissioner, you want to take over, or you want me to?
No, back to you, sorry about that.
All right, so that takes care of Agenda Item thirty-five and thirty-six. Thirty-five and thirty-six, okay.
You can go right back to the beginning if you like.
Thirty-six, thirty-five.
Thirty-six, thirty-seven. Thirty-six, thirty-seven. But before we do that, we do have a Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership here, they're there. They'd like to discuss, I told them they could come to the workshop and discuss a little bit about what they wanted to do with the Ween Building, now that the Ween Building is down and everything, so not up to...
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. I'm Matt Martin. I'm the Director of Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership. Among other things, we manage the County Bank Bank, which means that we provide stations and donations, including this former Ween Building at 347 North Park, and we've been working with Phil Hart from Trumbull County to sort of attach the park space implemented there, so that the demolition is complete, and some of that grass starts to come in. Also, Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership, for the last decade, we've managed the former Farmers Market, which was initially over here at Courthouse Square. Last few years, it's been over here behind the Kinsman House. And our proposal, this discussion that we'd like to have, you know, started this morning, is that we would move the Farmers Market over to the former Ween Building site. Bring a lot more traffic with a lot of county workers and other people that are, to pick off and light for that space while there's no other long-term use for it. So we figured this is the place to start the discussion. That's our proposal, is that we would move there. Lydia Lynch, along with Sabati Triplelift, will own the Farmers Market. Our first date is June fourth, so this will start in June. We've sort of approached this year as a pilot stage for it, and then through late October, and see how it goes, probably come back to talk about it again for next year and beyond. We're here to talk about it tomorrow.
Yes, so essentially, the property where the Ween Building was located, I mean, for the remainder of the year, basically, well, until October, we'll start in June, until October, to utilize that space for the former Farmers Market. And there's obviously a lot of benefit there. We don't have any imminent plans for that property, so I wouldn't necessarily have a problem with it. I mean...
I have no problem with it.
Yes, Commissioner. I mean, I think...
As long as it's safe and secure, and they've got it to the point where it's, you know, filled in nicely, there's not going to be any hazards.
Yeah, we have all the requisite liabilities and policy practices in place from our time over here and our time at Kinsman House. I know we go into it with the understanding if there was any long-term development that we'd have to settle, but we would love to be there this year and beyond if it works out, so...
Bill, is there anything that we need to do on our end as far as having them on that property, or do they have to supply the county to anything?
I wouldn't think so. The only thing that I guess I would suggest is maybe just checking into the insurance with Corsa, and if you guys have your insurance involved from your other endeavors in other places, maybe just get them to coordinate, but other than that, you know, it is public property, so I don't see that there'd be an issue if you guys need to do that as long as every insurance group was satisfied.
It is a very, you know, successful program. You know, a lot of people enjoy it, centrally locate it in a way, and keep it downtown. Very progressive, and it's a very good thing that, at least for the short term, we can utilize it in Trumbull County, maybe for the long term.
Yeah, we can spend this year seeing how it goes.
Yeah.
By the way, the Farmers Market is every Tuesday from three to six, June to October, so I'll, while you guys come there, find our local farmers and producers. Yeah, we'll kind of just look at like a cut and paste from all of the insurance and permissions and all that that we have at the other location. I'll follow up from today and maybe...
Maybe follow up with Alex, right?
Yeah, if you could just, I was just kind of waiting my turn. Alex, Human Resources Director. So the property is owned by the county, and we would have had it insured when we had a building on the property. We still technically have the property insured, so if you can just give me whatever you have, and I'll shoot it over to Corsa and make sure that our insurance agent can either add you on or that we're covered as if. I just want to make sure, God forbid anybody slip, trip, or fall at the Farmers Market, we have to be insured. It is county property, so that's all I need.
All right, cool, I'll follow up.
And then parking, just know that, I guess I would want to make sure you understand, like, county employees are all parked around there, so parking might be tight for you during that time. That's all I wanted to say.
That's true.
I mean, I just want to be honest with you upfront.
Yeah, well, at least from a partial amount of that time.
Yeah, so like the three o'clock, obviously, people are out of here at four thirty, but there is going to be that short amount of time where, I mean, employees are fighting for those parking spots, so they're going to be in those parking spots. That's the only thing I want to make sure you kind of look into.
What's the plan for the parking? Are you looking at...
Well, I mean, the plan is that we're going to have to see how it goes. Obviously, we can't use, we think there's enough in surrounding properties, and we want to, across the street, at least in the interim, you know, but like, we want to start with you guys, obviously, make sure that's going to apply at all in the concept. We can cobble together enough spaces, you know, or in half from the property ground.
You're probably as aware of the downtown district as anybody, so you know where the spaces are, and you can probably direct them there.
I think we'll be all right. I mean, we've been limited to like twenty spaces.
That's true.
We've made that work. The market does get a really good turnout. It's usually not all at once, it kind of rolls through the numbers, so I think we'll be okay, but that's kind of one of the things we'll...
I don't have an issue with it as long as the insurance is covered and...
If you have my contact information, if not, I'll...
I'll drop you a card and we'll go from there.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Matt. Thank you. Okay, we're getting to our agenda.
Commissioner Cantalma-Masoch, while Matt's still here, why don't we skip to twenty-five?
That's right.
And I'll give a little brief explanation of what happened and why we have to amend this one.
Okay.
The resolution that was sent over initially by the attorney had a mistake in the amount of the grant, and they had, it was a one-dollar mistake. However, we had to have it agree with what is actually been committed and we actually had to invoice for.
Okay.
So it was, the original resolution had two-one-six-five-five-three-ten, and it's five-five-four-ten is the appropriate amount. I know, it was a holdout. Believe me, I just wanted to like hand him a dollar, but we had to do it right.
This is the amended version for that.
Yeah, that's all it is, okay? So I just want to make sure, since he's still here, we cover it.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
And we'll get that as soon as we get it passed through. We'll get it taken care of quickly.
Okay, and back to the initial part of the agenda, we will be having a presentation, as it says on here, resolution honoring the retirement of Mr. Tim Schaffner, Executive Director, and all of us know how valuable he's been to the county and his agency. Moving on to number one and two, pretty standard, dispensing the reading of the minutes and approving the bills. Number three, approving the municipal advisory agreement, binding between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and Mass Financial Advisory Services LLC. This is to serve as a fiscal consultant for Trumbull County. Trumbull County agrees to pay a retainer fee of $8,000. The agreement shall be effective commencing February 14th, 2024, and ending February 13th, 2025. I'll get reordered.
I'm going to let Christie, Senior Accountant, handle this one.
Hi, Christie Accounting, or, I'm sorry, Auditor's Office. This is an annual agreement that we have with MAF Financial Advisory Services. He does serve as our financial advisor. He usually gets paid based on the debt that we have issued, and it gets paid as part of that. We don't usually pay the $8,000. Last year, we did have to pay a portion of the $8,000 because we only had one debt issuance, and it wasn't for a very large dollar amount, so it didn't cover that $8,000.
Okay. This is pretty standard.
Yes, he's helping us right now with our issuance for the March debt. He's done the OMAF application for us with the Treasurer's State's Office. He's kind of acted as a liaison between the Treasurer's State's Office and our office, or in the county. And then he also works with the underwriter for us, and the fire standards and Dempsey, like Beach Shore.
Okay. Any questions?
At the top, Commissioner, we're going to honor Tim Schaffner.
Yes.
Also, tomorrow, we need to make recognition and the moment of silence for Bud from the Fair Board.
Yes, yeah.
And then we also need to add there Black History Month, we haven't had a meeting in regards to that, so we'll try to find, I'm going to try to find a, if anyone's listening now, a preacher or minister or bishop from the black community can maybe come and lead us in prayer tomorrow, and then have a chance to talk about any things they have coming up, possibly at the church or community engagement things that we can bring up tomorrow and kick the meeting off.
That'd be great.
So we can reach out to maybe Bishop Aaron or...
Pastor Todd Johnson.
Pastor Todd Johnson, somebody if they're listening, if they would like the time of the beginning of our meeting tomorrow, would like to make sure we include that.
And then, Commissioners, just so you're aware, Human Resources Department did put out communication, of course, commencing, commemorating Black History Month on Friday. We also took it as a training opportunity to talk about diversity, DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. So it's a very good, I highly encourage everybody, should have gotten it. If you didn't get it, reach out to the Human Resources Department. It's a training on how we can all get better together, acknowledge diversity amongst all of us. training on how we can all get better together, acknowledge diversity amongst all of us, make sure that we're equitable, and also include everybody in their thoughts and opinions. So it's, it's a really good training. I highly encourage you to look it over, share it with your staff. It's a way that we can all get better together.
Absolutely. And in, in looking at some of the data, just real quick before we get back to the agenda, don't get too off course, but, uh, had a meeting with the Youngstown Warren Black Caucus, and our numbers of, of minority representation here in the county are at an all-time high for Trumbull County, and that's no accident. We've made a concerted effort to try to do that, and, uh, you know, I think that, um, this past year alone, we've, we've had leaps and bounds, and-
Yep.
-been higher than we've normally been, and we want to continue to do that and continue to get the word out for that. So that's always a positive thing, and positive to mention in Black History Month. So, um, thank you. Thank you, Alex.
Yeah, it's, it's actually something that we strive for. Thank you to all that our department has, obviously, too, for encouraging diversity. And it's not even just, you know, to Commissioner Cantor Mesa's point, um, our, you know, we have many Hispanics that we've, we have many, you know, we have multiple different cultures, and it's, it's something that we actually really do pride ourselves on. And it's something that we don't talk about a lot in Trumbull County.
You're in.
But our numbers are up, uh, per our EEO four state reporting, and that's something that we're really proud of.
Absolutely. Okay, uh, so, number three, moving on to number four, adopt a resolution approving the attached labeled as then and now, January twenty twenty-four, greater than a hundred dollars of purchase orders to the various vendors as then and now purchase orders in compliance with, in compliance with ORC five-seven-zero-five dot four-one-D. Now, I know we were trying to sort of get away from this, is this, are we, are we nearing, nearing some sort of improvement with it?
We're getting closer, but I think it's always going to be something for us now.
Sure.
Because there's always, I mean, the county decides, and the number of transactions that we have going through here, there's always going to be some exceptions. We're just trying to narrow that list down to not quite so large, to be, to, you know, like, something happened over the weekend, and maintenance had to take care of something, not as the normal course of business, which some of our departments are now using it for. But we have been working with them, they've been reaching out to us, you know, they're even notifying us now ahead of time, saying, we know that this has happened, you, you know, like, can you put us on the list? Uh, so it is getting better. We do see improvement, it's, it's, we're not at a perfect level yet, but we're just seeing improvement.
It's hard to change folks who've done things a certain way, and been able to do things a certain way. Um, it's just, we're, what we're trying to do is make sure that they understand that while the, that doing this this way is technically compliant, it shouldn't be the norm, so.
And we are working with a lot of the departments that have unusual situations, kind of like JFS and veterans, where they don't know that these people need help until they come in. So we're trying to work with like blanket certificates, or just like general ones to giant eagle, in the case of like veterans, and then have those open for the month, and then add those people on to there. So we are having to try to be a little creative with situations like that, so.
Wonderful. Okay, great. Okay, number five, to enter into an interagency cooperative agreement binding between Trumbull County Automatic Data Processing Board and the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services for electronic data processing services for the period effective of January first, twenty twenty-four, through Ja- or, through, excuse me, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-six cents. To be paid their various shared expenses, with no general funds requested. The agreement allows the Trumbull County Automatic Data Processing Board to provide electronic data processing services for the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services. John and Tim, perhaps? John?
Yes, John Gargano, Director of Job and Family Services. Commissioner, these, this is a normal agreement that we have every year. It's usually an agreement, then we have the option to renew for additional years. It's based upon the cost that, for the services provided from the auditor and, and Tim, and we've reached an agreement on this, and asking for you to just consent for the approval.
Yeah, I'll add a few things. Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, I do want to note that on this one, and also on number six, even though I know that there has been issues with, um, the dates on some of these contracts.
Yeah.
Um, I did, uh, we have, we included with, uh, the, um, agenda item, the email exchange between myself and Prosecutor Danzo, that this is not an issue in this case.
Thank you.
That we're okay with it, and so it was included in the, in all of the information that you brought.
Because essentially, you've been providing the service-
Correct.
All through that time, anyway.
For years, for years.
Right, and then also, with regard to this, Melissa had also checked, um, when we had that conversation, that as long as you guys haven't paid anything-
Right.
-it's fine. She had checked with, um-
She's checked with the state.
With the state, yeah.
As long as we haven't paid any invoices prior to the actual execution, there's no issue with the, with the state.
With the dating. So we've checked at both the county level and the state level on this, and made sure that we're good. Did you have anything to add to it? Right.
Alright, and the numbers are there, uh, bottom there on number six. Uh, so that covers five and six. That's just child support.
Yeah, number six is just child support, same thing, and actually, there's a different, I mean, the total amount is there, but the local match is thirty-four percent, and the federal, we get sixty-six percent. So it's broken down, so you could see the, uh, the numbers.
Okay. Thank you, John.
And I, just because we've on these, and Christie needs to leave, Christie had some questions with regard to the WRTA agreements that you had approved.
Yeah.
Um, I talked to Mike yesterday about the memory difference of understanding for the federal grants of the WRTA, because a question had come up as to where is that money coming from?
Right.
So we do need to address that. Also, I believe we need to address, um, which department will be administering the local share for the county? Because my understanding is, my first thought was that the money was going, our share and Warren City's share, was going to WRTA, and they administer it. But according to Mr. Salamoni, um, Warren City's share comes here, we're receiving it in with our share, and then we pay WRTA monthly. So we need to address which department will be administering that, um, and that would be, you know, the receipt of Warren City's share, payment of the monthly bills, and maintaining the records associated with the grant. Um, I said, with the funding source. And then, what fund is the grant going to be used to account for the local share of the grant activity? Like, are we creating a new grant, you know?
New fund.
Fund, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Funds with account numbers, are we using a fund that's already out there, for example, transit, like, how are we moving forward with that?
I would, I would say that it would be a brand-new fund, and that the, the funding would come from other sales tax, I would assume.
Okay.
Or, um, you know, if there's money left in casino revenue as well.
We can look into those areas, and then my suggestion would be to transfer the, the local share to the new, new grant fund, and then account for everything in there.
Okay.
Uh, just to add, we've, we've kind of had a little bit of a not-so-great habit of just paying things directly out of that.
Yeah.
And so we're trying to get into a better practice, where if you, and we've done this with regard to some things with the Sheriff's Office as well, from the nine-twenty-eight, you know, the Justice Fund.
Yeah.
So what we're trying to do is, is if we identify, okay, that's where the money is ultimately coming from, we transfer that into a fund where it's going to be paid out of.
Right.
Yeah, we all, all of our expenditures are accounted for in the same fund. We don't have to go searching, like, okay, well, part of the car was safer here, and part of it was the same real fact over there. So that's kind of the, in the scenario we're trying to get into.
And as far as the accounting and the keeping track of the fund, that should be money. What? No?
What's that?
For paying the actual-
Monitoring the grant.
Monitoring the grant.
Yeah.
Well, let's get with Shara then, and we'll have to use her.
Will we go get Shara?
Yeah, can you get her? I'd hate to put one more thing on Shara's plate, because she's already-
And we have, we can train on the MUNIS system, I mean-
That's what you're going to do, Mike. I mean, in the meantime-
We have that, I mean, we're all trainers in our office in MUNIS, so.
Right. We're working on that. We want to make people understand, especially in, as we've had some turnover in different departments, we're perfectly willing, and Christie's great, we're actually going to be training another trainer, so that everybody understands that.
Sure, the last thing, Sheriff Taylor, uh, or Council Table, or, uh, the last thing we want to do is teach another, uh, job on to you, because you're already spread a little thin. What we talked about is, is training, Mike, on, on this, on MUNIS, so that he can handle this, but in the meantime, he may need some immediate assistance.
I can help. Yeah, I can.
But, but it, but with the, with the fact of weaning you out and, and having him do it for the remainder of the time.
Yeah, that would be extremely helpful, and considering he's an administrator, that he's administering that grant, and, and paying the bill. I understand I pay bills, but I don't under, I don't pay bills for every department.
Right.
I don't. So, I'm a little bit underwater, doing the best I can.
Yeah.
But to add that, where I'm making sure that this, and it does need to be watched carefully.
Sure.
It's a grant.
Right.
So we have to make sure that we do our due diligence, but I will help anybody do anything at any time.
Mike, is that okay? That we, you, you learn from Shara and, and on the MUNIS system, and then eventually, maybe two months.
Christie, Chris, I just told Christie to make sure to give Mike a call today, and set up a time, and we'll just get, get him started on it, okay?
That'll be good. Sorry to bring you up, but you're the one who's going to do the heavy lifting. Okay, uh, can I answer that?
That's, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
And before I let Christie go, does anybody else have any question, more questions for her, about anything?
I said I can take it, right.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, seven. Agenda number seven, to approve an agreement for legal services binding between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, Trumbull County Prosecuting Attorney, and the Board of, uh, Park Commissioners of the Trumbull County Metro Parks. Uh, this is for provisional legal services by the prosecuting attorney for the benefit of the Trumbull County Metro Parks. The prosecuting attorney will provide legal counsel and assist the park board on metro park, metro park legal matters, as directed by the Board of Commissioners, or the Park Commissioners, excuse me. The agreement is effective for the period commencing January first, twenty twenty-four, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Park Board shall compensate the prosecuting attorney the annual amount of one dollar plus reimbursement for any out-of-pocket expenses incurred during representation of the park board. So, so this is, uh, I don't, I don't know where this got off track in the beginning when we were talking about this, but this is a, basically, a collaboration that was done in order to save funds, because the commissioners would ultimately have to pay for an outside attorney if that, if we didn't use the prosecutor's office. So I, I think this is a positive thing, and anything where the prosecutor's office is obviously conflicted, which there are some things, or where they need specialized service, they go out for their own legal counsel anyway. But in the meantime, all, all the, the routine and, um, as far as evements and all that goes, I mean, a lot of those things, the park board uses our prosecutor's office on. I think it's a way to save money. I don't know why, I, I, I believe one person mentioned that we don't know why we approved this in the beginning, but we approved it in the beginning because it, it saves county tax dollars, and it saves dollars at the end of the day. So this is something I'm obviously for, and I'm glad the prosecutor's office is willing to do it, uh, for such a reasonable cost, and assist the commissioners in that manner. So, um, do you have anything on that?
Well, we just had many discussions with this over the last two meetings.
Right.
In regards to the Metro Parks Board being their own entity, different than us, making their own decisions. Um, they utilize our legal, uh, team, but on the routine mundane things like that, absolutely is a cost-saving measure. When there are issues like that, uh, that, that came up recently, I think we're going to have to split anyway, and, and each have our own attorneys when it comes with that, because the prosecutor will be split when it comes to those types of issues, uh, uh, and there's going to be some more conflicts coming up with the Mahoning River stuff. So that's something where I guess, I'm okay with, with agreeing to this, but, you know, just so the park board knows, when we get into the issues where they may defer, or, or don't have unanimous consent of the citizens of the county in what they're doing, they may have to get their own counsel at that time, because ours is going to represent us at that time in our interest, and, uh, it's going to create some situations. But rather than them paying that, that all the time for everything-
Right.
-I would rather than give them the, the perfect benefit, which is going to save the taxpayers' money, on the little stuff, but then, like you said, just still withholding, you know, the autonomy of our board, the autonomy of their board, and where's a conflict there, they're, they're heading to get their own attorney when it comes to those types of things.
But ultimately, I mean, we're the ones that, that fund the, the parks board, and this is a savings to us. I mean, when and if they need that other legal counsel, they go get it. But when and if there is a conflict, we go get it, and they go get it, you know, but in the meantime, I think, um, this is an effective, you know, you thought, and a help, and a, and a, and help for us, as commissioners.
Bill Danzo from the prosecutor's office. I, I just want to point out, too, that, you know, conflict issue can be a real one. I, I don't dispute that. What I would say, though, is that I think we've been doing this for about six years now as counsel for Metro Parks, and I think, my recollection at least, is that this, this present concern about the Mahoning River dam removal, that's the first instance I can remember where there has been a direct, possible even, dispute between the Board of Commissioners and Metro Parks, legally speaking. So-
You're right.
I, I don't think that the, that this is one where conflicts come up all the time. Um, you know, so I, I think that that, that might, you know, kind of help some of your thought process, too, as you go through it. Uh, but like I said, it certainly can happen, but it also can happen between county agencies here internally. So you never really know when that's going to happen, but we try to do the best we can to, to make it a cost-savings thing for people, and handle as much routine stuff as we can.
Is there a way, Bill, where if that conflict arises, and we put something in here that we take precedent, we still get you, we don't have to go hire our own, they don't have to go hire their own, where we could still use you, and you defer them to outside counsel at that point, but you still represent us first?
We, we'd really have to take a look at our ethical rules on what we can do. The risk for us, under our rules, is that if we have discussed anything even remotely related with our other client, where we've learned something that could be used against another client, it still puts us in a conflict of interest situation. So that's the risk whenever we deal with multiple government entities, is that sometimes, even in the closer calls, we have to be out, because it is very possible through the discussion of a separate issue, we've learned something that could be used against another client ultimately, and that is absolutely something we can't do. So, um, now, there are other things that give us more flexibility than non-public lawyers. There's some guidance out there from disciplinary counsel that talks about the fact that we can negotiate between clients when there's not a direct, when there's not direct litigation, when it's just, in other words, not every disagreement becomes a conflict. It's just that some disagreements go so far that they do, and that's where we always try our best to not have to screen out from both sides if we can. Um, and sometimes that's possible, particularly in, in an instance, we may be a statutory representative of a township, uh, but maybe that township has never used us, or they haven't used us for the past ten years because they've had their own lawyer. There are cases where perhaps we could do things for the commissioners where we haven't represented them. All that to say, I guess, it's a case-by-case basis. We have to make the best call we can ethically to know when we can or can't represent one party or another. In a case where we can, we will always try. Let's put it that way.
But to say that this type of collaboration and shared service is not a good thing, I think is wrong, because this is what we should be trying to do. So, um, and I think we, we thank the prosecuting attorney for, for, for doing it for us, because, um, you know, they could, they could charge a nominal amount, a higher nominal amount, or that we, they could say, no, we can't do it, and we'll have to go out, and we'll have to foot the bill. So we appreciate it, so thank you.
Okay.
Uh, any other questions? Alright, number eight, to authorize Denny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute on behalf of the Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office, the annual federal equitable sharing agreement and certification report for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and to authorize the Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office to electronically file the document. Bill, do you want to talk about that a little?
Sure, I can, I can explain again.
Bill Danzo.
Bill Danzo from the prosecutor's office, and I will try to stop talking after I discuss this. Um, this is a routine annual occurrence. Hand of the microphone, unfortunate. Um, this is a routine annual occurrence. Uh, we participate in the equitable sharing program through the United States Department of Justice, and all it does is hold open an account that if we ever prosecute criminally a, a case jointly with the federal government, which happens rarely, if there is a forfeiture that goes along with that, if it's, for example, drug trafficking, and there's cash, houses, whatever, it would be seized as part of that criminal process, we share in the proceeds of those forfeitures with the federal government. Uh, for many years, there has not been any money going in, because we haven't had any- For many years, there has not been any money going in because we haven't had any of those joint prosecutions. But it doesn't cost us anything to hold the account open just in case one comes up. So, that's all we ask you guys to do is file the yearly certification just in case.
Self-explanatory, thank you, Bill. Questions? Number nine, to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners clerk to advertise for sealed bids for the purchase of asphalt concrete, excuse me, and asphalt emulsion materials to be furnished to the Trumbull County Engineers Highway Department throughout the duration of the contract period April first, twenty twenty four, through March thirty first, twenty twenty five, in accordance with the bid specifications. That's, uh, pretty self-explanatory and just housekeeping for the, uh, Highway Engineers Office. Number ten, any questions on that? Number ten, to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners clerk to advertise for sealed bids for the purchases by two minutes materials uh, to be furnished to the Trumbull County Engineers Highway Department. Again, uh, there's a pretty standard.
And one, just one question I have on that, if anyone's on the phone from the Engineers Office. Like, we got a call here, um, Sidley on North River Road, uh, has been a provider for a long time with us, and they just got bought out, I guess, recently by somebody else, and the new company called and asked about bid procedure, bid process, things like that. I'm just curious if the Engineers Office had talked to anybody, uh, from the old Sidley, or if they've had communications with them yet or not. If they're on their grade, if not, well, we can figure that out later, but we'll make sure that, uh, this advertisement, of course, gets out to them, including the new one.
Anybody on from the Highway Engineers? Okay, uh, moving on, number eleven, we'll, we'll follow up with that, hopefully at tomorrow's meeting or something.
Okay.
Uh, number eleven, uh, to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners clerk to advertise for sealed bids for proposal for the year twenty twenty four, road rehabilitation program, this project is being paid for by the Trumbull County Engineer Funds and Township Funds. A yearly occurrence there. Questions? Number twelve, uh, to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer, authorize Bezetta in Kinsman Township to establish weight limits on the township roads as listed, that's Bezetta Township, uh, roads, um, Caldwell-Sonk Road and Durst-Clag Road, and in Kinsman Township, Ward-Christie Road. Okay, uh, number thirteen, to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to grant a special hauling permit, move overweight equipment over to Trumbull County roadways requested by the company listed. The necessary permit, bond, and insurance have been submitted, and approval is subject to the conditions listed on each permit. We have Midwest Land Clearing, Midwest Land Clearing. Uh, number fourteen, to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to grant a right-of-way permit, and that's with, uh, CoCA Development, LTD, uh, Bright Speed Ohio, LLC, um, that's for the work that they're doing with that, correct?
Yes.
The, and with the project.
Yes, Bright Speed is installing broadband fiber cables right now, um, and they're going to the state for logistics. So, this is on top of their partnership with them.
Oh, gotcha, okay, all right, you're getting, from the Southwest Market Street. Um, Mike Coast Construction, uh, and Dominion East Ohio. Uh, number fifteen, to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to grant a special hauling permit for haul steel coils, and that's with Jarro Transportation. Sixteen, to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to grant the special wire fleet permits for fleet vehicles to produce work, aggregate, concrete, construction goods, or other like materials to sites located upon road posts in Trumbull County roadways requested by the companies listed. The necessary permit fee and insurance information have been submitted and approved. An approval is subject to the conditions listed on the permit, that's R and L Carriers, Midwest Land Clearing, Van Kurin Tree Service, Thayer Construction, Gregor Trucking, and Distributor Services, Inc. Number seventeen, to enter into a professional services agreement with MS Consultants, Inc., uh, to provide professional engineering services for the True South Main Street Bridge, Warren number one, PID number one-one-eight-seven-three-one, excuse me, located on South Main Street over the Mahoning River in the city of Warren. Professional services agreement was prepared by the Ohio Department of Transportation in the amount of two hundred eighty-five thousand, ninety-four dollars and zero cents. No general fund money is utilized, and this is per the request of the Trumbull County Engineer. Anyone on the, on the line wanna discuss that at all in the Engineers Office? Again, that's their funding, no, no general fund and no commissioners' funds utilized. Uh, number eighteen, to award all bids submitted for the, to get material for use by the Trumbull County Engineer, and to enter into a contract with each company listed for all materials which the companies bid. Contract will be effective for the term commencing February eleventh, twenty twenty four, and ending February tenth, twenty twenty five. And see the bids submitted there, um, no general fund money, obviously, and, and, um, uh, subject to review and approval of the prosecutor's office, so. Any questions? Number nineteen, to execute a letter of support, we did that already, we talked about Saint Vincent de Paul, but it bears repeating. They came in today, they're, they're seeking state funding, uh, through the, through the state budget. Uh, they talked to Representative, um, Man Tusi about it, and they're in the process of talking to, uh, State Senator as well. And, um, five oh one C three that, that, that works here in Trumbull County to provide meals, uh, underprivileged and underserved community. Uh, they're, they're expanding their footprint here in Trumbull County. Uh, they do great work, and we're happy to, uh, approve the, the execution of the letter of support, so. Uh, number twenty, um, remove from table item number twenty-eight, uh, for Commissioner's meeting agenda under the date of January thirty first, twenty twenty four, to allow Trumbull County employees to serve as poll workers and to be compensated with regular pay in accordance with O R C three-five-zero-one dot twenty-eight. Special note, press precinct election, precinct election official lead policy created by Human Resources also subject to the Board, Board of Commissioners' approval. Talk a little bit about this. You know, it's been, I've gotten, I've gotten letters about it, I've talked to different people about it, talked to former poll workers about it. Let us know a little bit about it.
I, I guess the one thing I wanted to find out, Ed, you already sent you an email yesterday from the poll workers up in Kinsman. If you were able to reply back to that, I wanna review that.
I did reply.
See what it was, was some poll worker said, and I've gotten a lot of feedback too, a lot of people that work the polls saying it isn't fair to them.
Right.
But then again, there is nothing stopping a private employer out there from paying their employee to go work the polls and do a civic duty that way. And there, there may be some companies that do that. The other, the, the, the one complaint that I wanna address the most, there were some poll workers that wrote in, said they did it for years and years, dozens of years, I guess it was, four of them, and then somehow they got split up with schedules, and then they weren't asked to come back, and then, um, they said, no, we're looking for poll workers, but they've already done it for many years, and they wanna continue to do it, but they haven't been reached out to in some way, shape, or form, and they'd like to have their four people back again at that polling place instead of new county employees or someone else filling in for them.
I spoke to that same individual.
Yeah, so I, I, I sent forward that letter over to Ed yesterday, and I just kinda wanna hear, have we reached out to everybody? Are we taking care of our loyal people first, I guess, is what I wanna make sure.
Yeah, so in that particular letter that I'm sure all commissioners received, I received it also. But this, um, particular poll worker called me yesterday, took the call, over an hour conversation. We went through some of this, all of it, actually. And at the time, when we're putting together an election, you get changes through the Secretary of State. We have to abide by these rules. In some elections, this is a poll election, a busy election, we're at six hundred and thirty-two, and then we have to have twenty percent on top of that, okay? When it's just a citywide election, we drop those poll workers, saving the county money, taxpayers' money. That we don't need that many to cover the board. And in that situation, that happened a couple of years ago. Then there's people who get sick, then there's people, whatever, whatever it is, now we're replacing, we're constantly shuffling people, shuffling people around, which we try not to do. The biggest thing in, for the Board of Elections, we wanna recruit, we wanna train, and we wanna retain them. So, we're trying to constantly do all those, retain them, and then other people. But now, and I explained to this woman, why are you calling me two hours, two years later? These people haven't worked, for whatever reason, and I, oh, do you wanna work? A lot of people, well, now I have this precinct full. I can't just eliminate the people that have been working there the last couple of years just to make more room, and I can't add people, I can't have extra people. We have to have that bipartisan team, which was a big change last year in the Board of Elections as poll workers. Um, the judges have to be as a party of the highest vote in the, of the governor's election. We had to make many changes. Some people got upset over it, and I'm not working it. Oh, okay, I, I still have to follow the law in the Secretary of State. So, her and I came to a lot of understanding, and at the end of the conversation, um, she agreed to do, she was great, I told her she'd call me at any time. I asked her if she wanted to be a poll worker, she said she wasn't able to do it, but maybe in November. Okay, in November, I'm not gonna remember to call you back. They're all listed in our voter registration system, some are active, that's who worked the last election. Some are on an alternate list, okay, I can't work this election, but, um, if you call me, I might be able to, and some are inactive. I mean, it's just our electronic system, how we have to do this at this point. So, we're sending out letters in the beginning to every single one that worked last year's election. We still need to call them in, they need to call in to schedule their training. But to wait two years to write to them, the best thing is, we came to an agreement of understanding on things that did happen, um, there were some statements in this letter, saying she was still picking her daughter up at an airport, taking Uber. I'm sorry, unless I know you personally, and you're saying I might be joking with you, but I don't think that's happening. So, this letter, I believe that, um, this person understood some of my explanations and why we would have had to shuffle people around, or why she didn't call back in and talk into signing up for training, what happened. But the simple fact, now it's two years later, and this was addressed to me. Tried to handle it, I think she was very kind, very understanding, um, we agreed to disagree on some things, and I, it came out that we still have to pile, follow the O R C and Secretary of State, and she's still not able to work the, the election right now at this point. So, that's the best I can do.
I, I guess my biggest concern is to make sure, before we add one person from the county role that's getting paid, we make sure we turn over every rock of the people who have been loyal to us in the past, we, we give them first option, we retain the people that wanna be retained where they wanna go, preferably, and then we fill in the need with last chance people that we have to pay to go fulfill the duty. If there's people willing to volunteer to do it civically, if there's people that have done it in the past, they wanna continue to do it, I want them to have first preference always. And then, if we're short still, then, and we've, we've went to the schools, we've done everything else, then if we have to open up the county workers at that point, that's where I feel comfortable saying, okay, we need forty more, or whatever it is, this is what we gotta do.
So, that's.
We need to have our election run smooth.
I, what, just left our board meeting to get here for this. We are in, it was a discussion, we had, um, poll workers from outside coming in, where they're saying, well, partisan, both partisan, Republican and Democrat, that you should place our workers, we can't do that. And like you said, when people have been working and showing up and doing this and taking their own time, doing everything, we do give them, we can't just pull poll workers, we don't do that. We give them the option, being on an alternative list, and, um, we definitely, they're the first to go. We've had county employees the last few years, we've, uh, I have sent it out to every department head, and the only response I have ever gotten was from Job and Family Services. And I commend, um, John Gargano for that, and it's usually because I'm hounding everyone there because I've worked there and I know them, and there's times that they could work that, um, seriously, I've never gotten, there's one other county employee, that's 'cause her mother came from Job and Family Services, and says she gotta work the election, 'cause she does too. But no, we're not going to, just because people from the county are asking to work if this gets passed, you know, you gotta remember, we've, and one, this lady said, well, I don't believe in double dipping. Well, I don't believe this is double dipping. These employees are getting paid for an eight-hour day, they start at eight-thirty in the morning till four-thirty, right? We're asking them to show up at three-thirty in, or five-thirty in the morning, and sometimes we're concerned, you're talking about six and a half hours. We, the Board of Elections, are paying that extra six and a half hours. County's paying them whether they're showing up here or doing a civic duty for Trumbull County to put on fair elections, qualified people here. And she listened to me and was like, well, I don't know, I still don't really agree with it, that, like I said, even this person who was totally against it, had an open, more mind about it after our explanation to Oregon. You know, but I want that to be very clear, the county pays the workers from eight-thirty to four-thirty. We're paying for the extra six and a half hours after that.
Yeah, the other thing too that we needed to spell, I had a caller and they said, well, why don't you just pay the workers more? Pay them, if the county worker's getting twenty dollars an hour, or thirty dollars an hour, and we can't, you're, you're set by state law. Here's what a poll worker makes, whether they're in Trumbull County, Franklin County, Lucas County, doesn't matter, poll worker pays, poll worker pays, correct?
It's set by the Secretary of State.
Okay, so, so we can't just pay people more that don't work for the county to come there?
No.
Can't, that's against the law. We're just following, the other thing is, this is legal, this isn't something we're inventing here in Trumbull County. This is something that the legislature made this out for the public to have the opportunity to do it, to provide, to ensure fair elections and enough poll workers for the elections to happen. We, Trumbull County Commissioners didn't invent this, Martha Yoder didn't invent this, Ed didn't invent this. This is something the legislature said, was signed off by the governor, that people can work the polls if they're a county worker, they're employed by the, the county in the state of Ohio, to maintain their polls, to make sure the polls function at the numbers where you need them to function. So, this is something that, again, state rep, state senator, if you don't like that, take it up with them. If you don't like what a poll worker gets paid, take it up with them. It has nothing to do with the county. All we're doing is using one tool that's in the toolbox and one law that's legal to, to make sure that we ensure that we have fair, equitable elections with enough staffing to maintain, to make sure the election process functions correctly.
That's all we're asking.
And then, if I can, just super quick, the double dipping comment, again, I wanna make this very clear, and I can't make this any more clear. You are going to pay me to be, let's say, Alexander DiMaggio Bush wants to be a poll worker. You're paying me no matter what, as it stands today. I wanna make that very clear. You're paying me out my vacation, you're paying me out my personal time, you're paying me out my comp time. So, there is no double pay, it's happening right now anyway. I just wanna make sure that was not necessarily represented in.
Well, well, you are, you are saving your time, you could cash it at the end of the year or something.
Saving eight hours of vacation, that is correct.
Correct, so it is, in a sense.
But you're not getting paid eight, eight, and then poll worker pay.
Correct.
Which is how people are interpreting this, in the double dipping. It's not double dipping. We're not getting paid twice by the county.
No, you're still getting paid for forty hours a week, but eighty your hours you're gonna be at the Board of Elections.
Correct. Also, this, again, in our policy that we created, this stops people from working any overtime in that week, from getting paid any comp time in that week. If you as a poll worker, we're actually, we actually, in an odd way, in some departments, may be saving some money.
Right.
I mean, we have to really look at it for what it is, um, and I think those points are. Um, and I think those points are getting missed and misconstrued. Again, you vote how you want, but I just want to make sure you have all the facts provided to you.
I just think the stuff you see on TV all the time about fair elections, the way you have fraud is you have nobody looking. The way you prevent fraud is you have eyeballs on the votes, you have eyeballs on the, the, the ballots, you have eyeballs from both parties watching what's going on.
Absolutely.
And that is the biggest fraud preventer there is, and all we're saying is, you want eyeballs to be there to make sure the elections are run fair and smoothly, and how could anybody that's out there complaining, that's complaining about election process and everything, complain about this, and we're saying, we're going to give you more Republicans than Democrats to watch these ballots, to make sure when people come in, everything is done fair and square.
And I invite anyone here that was wi- willing, I've signed all department heads to work a fourteen-hour day, to please give me a call, I'll give you the sign up for your training.
It will say, it's not an easy job, um, I can advocate for that because I've done it. Um, you're not sitting, and please don't take any offense to this, you're not sitting eating chocolates all day. You are literally up on your feet, to your point exactly, making sure that people are getting the right, um, ballots, making sure that the ballot machines are functioning properly, voiding out improper ballots, the correct way to make sure that every person's vote counts. I mean, this is a true civic duty, and again, I run my butt off when I work at the elections. I mean, I run my butt off. Um, we're dealing with the public from the moment we meet them to the moment we close, constant, it's almost like reminding you of being back at J F U. We have constant, it's like a person after person, after person after person. I value what poll workers do, that's all I can say, and I think that there's no greater public service that we can do as public servants in our current role than to do something like that.
I don't know, Mr. Gargano would say, if he's ever had a shortage of anyone that has asked to work the poll.
John Gargano, no, I've not had that issue. I, I will say this, Edgery has called me on several occasions, uh, begging me to, to help her out, and we do whatever we can. I think, it's just my opinion, that if this were to pass, I mean, it's your vote, that I think she would get more, uh, individuals there that would come and assist. Uh, people have said that to me, um, you know, they've asked me, and I said, you know, I have nothing to do with that, that's between the, the Board of, uh, Election and the Commissioners, um, but I've never had an issue. I know if people want to help, you're just looking for her, or their compensation, I guess I'll call it.
I have no problem with this now. I, I was skeptical with the complaints that came in, but I think addressing each one individually, the goal at the end of this thing is to make sure we have a fair election, and nobody can ever blame Trumbull County for doing something fraudulently, doing something wrong, um, and again, I think eyeballs would take that to happen, I think the people that are going to serve want to do it for the right reason. If you're going to put in a fourteen-hour day, um, you know, what's in it for you? I mean, they're not, they're not going to be able to cheat to get their buddy elected or anything like that. It isn't, there's no advantage that way. If anything, it is a long day for people that are there, it's a thankless job. Yeah, they, they're, we're going to let them get their pay, you know, big deal, they're, they're going to take a day off of work. People go to jury duty, and sometimes they go in, attorney doesn't show up, they still get paid the whole day for their jury, you know, services or whatever, they get kicked home. So, there's, that's a civic duty type thing, that people say, oh, you get jury duty, you go, no one ever complains about that. Um, I think elections are as important as sentencing and convictions and, and the jury system, and at least elections are important, I know to me, and it should be to every citizen in this county, that they're done fair, and if this is a tool you can utilize, and, and then, we disagreed, I thought initially too, I thought, oh my goodness, we're going to have like eighty people, ninety people signing up, you said you'll be lucky if you get twenty.
Yeah.
And, and we'll see, and I'm willing to give it a shot, let's see if it works. They do it in other counties, you know, let's, let's lead here in Trumbull County, and let's have the best elections we can have, let's have the fairest ones we can have, let's have the most participation that we can possibly have in an election. You know, that's, that's where I sit now.
I thank you, but.
And if there are employers out there that believe in the government process too, pay them, pay an employer too to go work the board. You know, send your, ever call Edgery up today and sign up, they'll get preference even over the county employees now, and, you know, maybe a doctor's office has a receptionist or a nurse they can spare for the day, or someone that, there's a lot of politically engaged business owners out there, and a lot of them watch CNN and Fox News and stuff, and if they want to send one of their people there to make sure the elections are done fairly, pay them to do it for the day, you're allowed to do that.
Absolutely.
It's your money, if you're a private entity, you could do the same damn thing.
I thank you.
Marla, what do you think?
I, I, I agree, and I hear everything you're saying. I, uh, I, I still have some reservations, but I, I haven't made up my mind quite yet.
I, I have, so I've, I had some reservations too, but I think my reservations are outweighed by fair.
Free and fair.
In the American process.
Yeah.
You know, that, that trumps everything to me.
It's one of the most important things we do here, if not the most important.
Right, so there are some people out there that are, I've done it for years, I never got paid a initial dime, I'm sorry they, that this wasn't an option for them back when they worked, before they retired. Most of the people I'm hearing from are the retired people that say, I'm only getting a hundred and thirty-three dollars for the day, why is this person getting their pay? I'm sorry that that's the case, um, but that doesn't mean let's just scrap it and just piecemeal together an election, you know, because it's not fair, because you never got to do it before. Take it up with the legislature and the governor, again, but I, I'm, I'm going to give you the tools to succeed, and I'd do it for any department head. If this was John Gargano saying, I need more staff for the day, or Gary saying, we got a major catastrophe, I need people from the Sheriff's Department to come help me, or something, we do the same thing. Um, it's our Board of Elections that we oversee, and shame on us if we don't give them the tools they need to succeed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that was number twenty, we're on.
Twenty-one.
Or twenty and twenty-one, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Um, number twenty-two, to accept the resignation of Ms. Jen- Jennifer Schaefer, uh, she's on probation, on a probationary period, uh, she's a telecommunicator in Trumbull County nine-one-one department, effective January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Is Tacey here, or anybody?
She is not, um, she asked me to speak to the matter. So, Alex DeMonge, Bush, Human Resources Director, uh, Tacey this morning had a complete power outage at nine-one-one, they lost their cams, radios, everything, uh, so she's dealing with that, rightfully so, she cannot be here. Um, they're back up and running, and everything's going fine, so, um, but her first real catastrophe in her director role, so she had to kind of work through that. Uh, with that being said, this was, we were hired four, uh, telecommunications back in September, and now we're down to three out of four with this one leaving. Uh, again, this was attributed, an exit interview was done by their director, uh, it was provided, and she said the job just was not for her. Uh, we see that happen very often, and at this point, we're doing anything and everything we can. There's two in the Pike right now being interviewed, again, those are just interviews. Um, I actually was there one day when a gentleman came in for an interview, and he looked like he was scared after, he walked out very scared. Um, so, again, you know, because we do preemptively tell them, this is going to be, we don't want to ever sell the bill of goods to these people, that isn't true. So, we preemptively tell them, this is going to be, you know, potentially a twenty-four-hour, you know, day operation, um, the types of calls you're going to be getting, um, and we're seeing a lot of applicants who are coming from telemarketing backgrounds, and I understand that that is somewhat similar, yes, you're on phones all day, but this is a whole nother, I think that that, we need to be better about how we're marketing the job, you know, this is not a telemarketing job, we call it a telecommunicator, maybe that's confusing to people. We really need to be calling a nine-one-one dispatcher. I mean, this is, these people aren't just fielding angry customer calls, these people are actually saving people's potential lives by getting the call to the right place at the right time. So, some thought processes that we're going through of how we better, how we get people, but again, something that I want to state loud and clear, as you said about the poll workers, the state has nine-one-one dispatchers as clerical. That is not something we in Trumbull County can change, that is not something Marla Kamilamasa or, uh, Danny Malloy can change. That would have to be a state legislative, they're classified as clerical workers. That limits us of what we can do with their pay. When we look at SERB, SERB says they're in line with what they should be paid because they're considered clerical workers. So, that's, at the end of the day, it is a, or it's a bump in the road that we're up against, so.
But we are lobbying for that, every chance.
I hope so.
With the Governor's Office, with the different offices that deal with that, Office of Management and Budget, you know, we have said, they, this needs to happen.
Wonderful.
There's a, a movement afoot.
It's nationwide.
From Sheriff's Departments and Police Departments, it is nationwide.
It is nationwide, it's a known.
Um, to change that, and hopefully, I mean, we would offer our support as a Board of Commissioners, if that time came with a letter or something stating that they need to be reclassified, but it's not our call right now, but, but we, uh, we would support that.
So, again, I just want to end with, so I know Martha Haslam's going to say, so, I want you all to like, look within for a second and think, would I want to do that job for seventeen dollars an hour?
Well, and that brings to another point that, that, that I need to bring up. I got an incident the other day at nine-one-one last Wednesday at three o'clock in the morning, where a fellow Commissioner called nine-one-one again for the thirtieth time, I believe, or last year, made a nine-one-one call, and dropped some four-letter words on the, the dispatcher that answered the call. Um, took up eight and a half minutes on a recorded nine-one-one line to complain about a dog next door that needed, apparently needed water. Um, the call hit the internet yesterday, and my phone blew up, um, with a lot of the public saying enough is enough, we got to stop this, we can't keep abusing the nine-one-one system, um, and they were concerned with the employee who were talking about employees having it rough. This is employee that basically had to endure, um, like four F-bombs from his boss, telling him how to do his job, that wasn't direct supervision with him. He did his job absolutely correctly, in my opinion, and I think the dispatcher in this case, Jeff Ford, should be commended for the way he handled the call. Uh, if anything, I would have probably hung up on that Commissioner six minutes earlier. Uh, he had another emergency call that was going on with a man with a gun in Howland, ended up with two ambulances going to that residence, and he told the Commissioner three times, I'm on, I'm on the other line with a man with a gun, a girl hiding in a closet, I can't deal with your dog thing right now. I got the call, we're going to dispatch it, we'll do everything we can for you, but I've got to go on the other line. And she refused to let him go, and dropped more F-bombs on him, and thank God, nobody got hurt or killed in Howland that night, but to take up eight and a half minutes on a nine-one-one emergency line over a next-door neighbor's dog that you could call the owners, you could knock on their door, it's clearly an ongoing issue. Um, I, I, we have one, one of the people that called is here, and first I wanted to assure that the dispatcher was in no trouble for that, and, and I hope that through H R, you were able to look at the stuff already and do your investigation on it to see that he did as good as he possibly could.
Yes, I, yeah.
I, I want to apologize to the dispatcher on behalf of the Board, that no county employee should ever, ever endure that type of verbal abuse from their boss, uh, from somebody in administration, and if this was Tacey that talked to him that way, she'd probably be fired right now. Or a Commissioner do it, um, irreprehensible, we can't, we can't have that ever.
I haven't heard the call from Commissioner, I haven't heard it yet. Heard about it, I haven't heard.
You, you don't want to listen.
I don't want to.
It, it's another one in the line of, uh, why, I don't know, three o'clock in the morning, I don't know. There's, there's seventeen other non-emergency phone numbers to that nine-one-one center, and they should have called six-seven-five-twenty-seven-thirty, the non-emergency number, and it would have taken up no nine-one-one space on there, but it was eight and a half minutes on one of the two nine-one-one lines they had. If a third call came in, it's going to get bumped to another county. Um, it was just going to put officer safety and public safety at risk, once we set, once we have to go off to another county, because our nine-one-one lines are full, but to take up eight and a half minutes to argue, tell the dispatcher how to do his job, and how to tell Warren Police how to do their job, after he was explained many times, here's the proper protocol, here's what we're doing, I can't tell Warren Police how to do their job, if you ever complain, go tomorrow at noon, talk to Chief Merkel, go, talk to the dog warden tomorrow, she refused to hear that as an answer, and, and wasn't getting it through her head that he's on an emergency line with a guy with a gun trying to break into a residence to get a girl. Um, we can't have that anymore, we can't have this. So, I don't know what's going to happen with it, I know there are a lot of people did Freedom of Information requests, I know it's been turned all the way up to the Attorney General's Office to ask for special look at, to have a special prosecutor, a special, uh, thing to look at it, but from what I've seen, there's been, I believe it's twenty-nine or thirty-nine-one-one calls by that one Commissioner just in the last year.
Twenty-eight.
And I think in the last five years, it's like eighty.
This year, this calendar year?
No, twenty-three to twenty-four. But twenty-three was like twenty-eight or twenty-nine, and then this is the first one of twenty-four. And they're all for meaningless things. There's still one that's pending out there, um, you know, where she actually used her name and her title and said, I fired somebody for doing something like this before, that she wanted to know who notified the media about a police call that was at her house. And those have all been turned up, nothing's ever happened with these things. And I don't know how many times, if this was Joe Public calling nine-one-one for the thirtieth time, um, they'd have a knock at the door by the sheriff, or Howland Police, or Warren Police, and there are laws out there for abuse of nine-one-one system and abuse of the nine-one-one line, making nine-one-one phone calls that aren't nine-one-one worthy, um, especially after you've been told not to. Um, so, this is a very, very con- deep concern for me, I don't know how to handle it from here, but being that the public has called, that they're hearing it on the internet, they're asking us, what are we going to do about it? Um, and the dispatchers are asking the same thing.
Yeah, they are.
How much abuse are they allowed to take before they can hang up on somebody? Especially if it's their boss, if it's a Commissioner. Are they going to get fired if they hang up over a dog call in the middle of the night when they have a more important call on the other line?
I think that's the biggest thing that H R has received in the past, obviously this just happened, um, it was late in the morning, it was three o'clock, I, I received a phone call from Tacey, uh, immediately in the morning, um, early, seven, something, I need you to come here. Uh, I did, I went there, assessed the situation, did a proper investigation, H R would do, I'm not going to get into all that here, um, but with that being said, the biggest thing that I'm hearing from the dispatchers is, what are you going to do about it? How are you going to, you know, make sure, uh, I am working with Tacey to figure out, so guys, I, I want to say something to you, and I want you to really put yourself in a nine-one-one dispatcher's position right now, because that's how I tend to look at things, um, not from the outside, I, I were in that position. He was damned if he did, he was damned if he didn't in that call. If he had hung up, it would have been front newspaper, no offense, right? It would have been nine-one-one dispatcher hangs up on an emergency call. So, we really have to understand, again, we understand it was an emergency call, just from listening to it, but the bottom line is, she did call the emergency number. Is it up to them to delineate? How do we understand that? How does Tacey say, and myself, this is an emergency, this isn't? You know, we, we can't say calls are up to people's discretion at some point, because what if it really is an emergency and they hang up? Okay? A, a dog barking, not an emergency. But again, you know, that's one of those, but if we make that blanket statement, somebody might, a new employee might interpret, well, I don't think this is an emergency, so I'm going to hang up. We don't want that either. So, we're trying to figure out what that balance is. Again, we don't want front newspapers to be nine-one-one dispatchers hang up on people. I mean, we don't want that either. Uh, we just need to figure out, Tacey's going to be, I, I encouraged her last Fri- it was on Friday, I said, you need to email every single police chief, every single department that you service, buyer entities, and make sure that they understand and have their non-emergency numbers routed to the non-emergency, a lot of their websites, I guess, can be part of the problem, if they say just call nine-one-one, guess what, people just call nine-one-one after hours. No, there should be a nine-one-one and a non-emergency number on their website, Warren P D should have that, Howland should have that.
They should have that, of course.
I would, I would think so, I haven't done the research on that yet.
Most all have, most all have.
Yeah, so there should be no excuse why, you know, a non-emergency should be coming in at one o'clock, three o'clock in the morning, uh, it's just, it's, they're very frustrated, and I don't, again, I'm here to say, I understand, and I hear them, and I would be frustrated too, and we are frustrated with the situation, and I don't know what to tell everybody. Um, it's almost unheard of that these things happen. I, I, I don't know why they happen, but I can't change a person, and I can't change people, wish I could, um, but we need to make the life, we need to make these dispatchers' life a little bit better if we can, and just hang on, I'm working, we're working with Tacey to figure out, can we get a phone? I know data's working on, we need to get a phone line, so when it rings into nine-one-one, it says, is this truly an emergency? Press one, if not, press two. I mean, we need to start really working on this quickly, um, because I have been watching their numbers, and their non-emergency calls have superseded their emergency calls almost by two percent, I mean, like double, sorry. That's not okay, uh, that's taking time away from, you know, what nine-one-one dispatchers are.
But the thing is, this is the person that knows better, this is the person that's This is the person that's the boss.
I don't disagree, yeah.
That knows better the difference between a nine one one emergency and a non-nine one emergency. She sees the budget, she sees the payroll. She knows, should know the job better than any other county employee or any dispatcher. And when a dispatcher says on there, this is not an emergency nine one one call, three times, and she just disregards it, keeps talking and, and belittling him and dropping F bombs, that's not acceptable. Uh, I don't care if you have fifteen numbers listed on the website, that's not gonna stop that.
I'm not saying, listen, I'm not saying that it is. I'm just stating, outside of her, I can't solve for her, right? But I, we do need to solve for the larger problem, which is, they shouldn't, that non-emergency call shouldn't have even been routed to that line. If, you know, we need to knock it off and nip it right in the bud right there. If this is not an emergency call, drop it. I mean, it, it needs to go to another line immediately. That eight and a half minutes, and I did listen, and I do know, there was a hostile situation going on on the other line, and you could hear him trying to tend to both. Can you imagine being in that position? It, it, it's unbelievable what he was put through. Period. And unacceptable.
And it's clearly everybody in the world knew who it was, and she wouldn't give her name. But it just ma, makes no sense. Until he said, I know who you are. And then she's like, well, who are you? And then he said his name, and then all of a sudden it became personal. And can't have that. Can't have that. So since we were on the nine one one thing, that's one of the things too. Not only do they get crap pay and horrible hours, they gotta deal with stuff like this. You know, we gotta make it better. We gotta do better.
Well, and that starts, again, I'm not preaching to the choir, I know you two know that, but that starts with leadership. And I would expect that leadership follows the role when it comes to nine one one calls.
All right, uh, we're, we're.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. We, we were sad to see another probationary employee, um, gone, and that's unfortunately been a trend for years and years, not just here, but a lot of, around the country and around every county here in Ohio. Uh, number three, to receive and place on file the monthly activities report for the Trumbull County Dog Count for the month of January twenty twenty-four, pretty self-explanatory, twenty-four. Um, to approve the proposed amendment, uh, proposed amendment number two to the Ohio Department Youth Subsidy Grant fiscal year twenty twenty-four, and authorize Denny Malloy, uh, number two is necessary for the purpose of realigning funds to further support youth programming needs allowable within the grant. The Youth Subsidy Grant Fund One Twelve operates from July first, twenty twenty-three, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. This will be at no cost to the county. I know we have somebody here from, if you want to explain a little bit, I mean, this is a, this is a very positive thing for the county, obviously.
That's right. Just moving some funds about three or mine for, um, community for, for the program.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, we did twenty-five, did we not, the other?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, twenty-five was completed.
Yeah, twenty-six.
Twenty-six is the same, it's just that everybody.
Okay. Uh, moving on to twenty-seven. Uh, to approve the personnel action for the employment of Ms. Shara Vasquez as a social service worker, three, effective Monday, February twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Vasquez will, um, be paid twenty, twenty-five per hour with full county benefits. She will be required to serve a nine-month probationary period. Gargano.
Yes, John Gargano, Job and Family Services. Uh, this is a position that, uh, no one did inside, so we went out to, uh, post it and, um, this, Mrs., Ms. Shara Vasquez was, uh, the one that was chosen. Uh, the only change on the agenda item is it's for February twenty-sixth, not February twelfth of twenty twenty-four is her starting date. Um, and I provided the grid to the commissioners, uh, show, uh, she was the top person, uh, out of nine, only actually two responded, came in for an interview. Uh, three, I think declined, and others, even though they, we followed up for them to come to an interview, they never showed up.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
I, I hate to circle back, but regarding, thank you, regarding, uh, nine one one and, and the urgency that we have to reclassify these people, because it's just not working, them being classified as clerical. Would it be, would it benefit us to have a meeting with the state representative, with our state representative, with our state senator, a public meeting to say, look, this is what we want to do, and this is what we want you to introduce? Can you help us? I, I mean, at this point, we're at the, thi, this is, in my time, been going on for nine years.
It has.
Um, and we've seen this kind of turnover. The only thing that's really gonna assist us is that, is, is that change in, um, if they'd be willing to sponsor something, just a food for thought, I just thought of that off the top of my head.
And one of the things I had wanted to add, but we needed to move on, was that when you're talking about reclassifying them, reclassifying them as public safety in order to get those opers benefits.
Exactly, exactly.
Exactly. It's a.
I talked to the governor's face about it when he was here at nine one one last year, when he came and enrolled out the next gen stuff.
I remember.
I sat two feet away from him and said, you need to change this. And he directed me to the girl from Office of Management and Budget.
Yeah.
And she's like, yeah, we're aware of this, it's something that we're, we're working towards. So they're aware. So now, I think we just need to apply heat and pressure.
Okay.
And, and get the right senators and state reps to finally do something with this thing.
Yeah.
They, they know about it. They, they, they're just sitting on it for whatever reason, I don't know if it's a.
Maybe it needs to be introduced.
Budgetary thing, but somebody's gotta be the love, love wheel on this one to finally make it happen. With what we got going on with nine one one, maybe, maybe it's us. Maybe it shouldn't be us.
Yeah. Anyway, just food for thought, that was something we can think about.
Well, I think that's a great idea, and it, it's a way to, Commissioner Keenan, we have to put our money where our mouth is.
Yeah.
And we're just, right now, we're doing lip service. But I mean, I, I actually think that we should try to.
A public meeting, get our state legislation.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to.
To, to create some, uh, to, to talk, and to at least let them know.
At least start.
And to go over all this, all these different things.
Yeah.
This is how long it's been going on.
It has.
This is what we're going through. We, we need assistance from the state.
I agree.
Meaningful legislation to change that, but, um, okay. All right, uh, we're, we're sort of.
Twenty-eight.
Sorry, twelve o'clock. Twenty-eight, uh, that says, uh, the county option for the one-year renewal of the contract awarded March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, uh, with Light and Oil Company. Uh, that's pretty self-explanatory for the supplying gasoline and diesel fuels Trumbull County built, that's, uh, obviously.
So they were the only bidder last year, do they have other bidders this year?
We don't rec, I don't receive those.
Okay.
I don't know who slipped out to receive the bid, I don't, those out. They were the only bid.
They were the only bid again?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. They do a great service for us, never, never had an issue.
Absolutely. Uh, number twenty-nine, to adopt a resolution authorizing Denny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to apply for, accept and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of Trumbull County, or County Trumbull for planning, design, and/or construction of a Stillville Drive sanitary sewer improvements project, number five dash S dash sixteen. So this is just, uh, the water, water pollution control fund that we use, uh, to enter into an agreement for that. Gary here?
Yeah, Commissioner.
Oh, there you are.
Uh, Gary Newbrow.
It's been so quiet, I didn't.
Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. Uh, Commissioners, this is just the next step in this project. We had a public hearing. Uh, after a public hearing, we submitted the drawings for the, uh, permit to install. And during that, in between the permit to install application and actually putting it out to bid, is a normal time for us to submit the application itself. So this is just standard procedure. And I do have it here for Commissioner Malloy to sign tomorrow after the meeting.
Thirty is to adopt, uh, um, this is for State Road, the same thing.
Yes, yes.
Adopt a resolution authorizing Denny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to accept for, to apply for, accept and enter into a water supply revolve, revolving loan up account, WSR LA agreement on behalf of the County of Trumbull County for planning, design, and/or construction of the State Road Water Regionalization Project Number Two dash W dash twenty-three.
Yes, Commissioners, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. This is, uh, Bertis and I were our consultant engineers on this. They were able to get that, uh, permit to install application in before the end of January. Now, this is the next step to go ahead and move forward and get this signed. And this is the project where it's approximately five point two million, and we are getting two point six million of principal forgiveness, but we have to award the contract in mid-May. So we're under gun here. These drawings have to get approved, we gotta get out the bid, we gotta get this application in also.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Uh, number thirty-one, to approve the detailed drawings for the Bizetta and Mecca wastewater treatment plant nutrient reduction project, known as, uh, County Project Number Eight Dash S Dash Twenty, Bizetta and Mecca Townships respectively in Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer, are in the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District Metro Subdistrict. We were on the, uh, call on that with the Ohio EPA and USDA and a lot of other, just this past week, right? That was a.
Yes, Commissioners, that same project. Uh, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer again. Uh, the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, we need to renew an easement with them for our outfalls from these plants in the Mosquito Lake. And they put these conditions on us before they would renew those, uh, agreements. We're gonna do something about reducing our nutrient load on the lake. And this goes hand in hand with, uh, the algae and, well, I don't know, with that other vegetation.
The chardilla.
Chardilla. This all goes hand in hand with that. So they impose some conditions on us that we need to reduce our phosphorus and nitrogen going into the lake. Uh, about one point eight million dollars for us to make that happen. Last week, we were in on a conference call, uh, with a board of, uh, funding agencies in hopes of getting a Corps of Engineers Section Five ninety-four grant to cover, um, at least fifty percent of that cost.
Fortunately, there was no principal forgiveness from the EPA or from USDA.
Right, yeah, none of the other funding agencies can really help us with this thing. It has to come through the Corps of Engineers themselves, and since they're the ones making us do it, so we're ho, we're hoping that we can get some of those funds for it. Uh, in the meantime, Scott, uh, Scott finished up the drawings, he wants to get them, uh, sent in so that we can get the PTIs, that'll only help with our scores with the Corps of Engineers, and I'll have the cover sheet here tomorrow, uh, for y'all to sign.
And we're, we're at least cautiously optimistic that the, that grant through the Corps of Engineers is gonna be substantial and help with this project.
Yeah, a lot of the times, they'll pay seventy-five percent, that's what I'm hoping for, yes.
Okay, uh, number thirty-two, to authorize Denny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute on behalf of Trumbull County, subgrant award agreement, subgrant, uh, for the TAG Law Enforcement Task Force. Grant is effective for the period of January first, twenty twenty-four, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Total funding for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant through the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services is in the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars. Greenich.
Yes, Captain Greenich, TAG Commander.
Captain, I'm sorry.
Um, this is, uh, normal procedure, we just need your signature on this. Uh, one thing I want to bring up, it is from January, December, sometimes poses a problem. Um, I put this on the agenda, request to be put on the agenda on February eighth, which is the day we were made aware of the subgrant award. So by no means are we dragging our feet, we have not used any of this funding at this point, you don't get it until this part's done.
Yeah.
Uh, so if any of those questions arise, uh, that's a reason why. Uh, no, no local cash match, so it's, that amount, uh, is ours from the grant.
Very good. No problem. Uh, number thirty-three, to authorize a donation of furniture from the Office of Trumbull County Board of Health, is submitted to Warren Township. The furniture is being donated to the Warren Township trustees, as it is not needed for public use by the Board of Health, and Warren Township is in need of office furniture, and will pick up the furniture and deliver it to their public offices. So.
Commissioner, go hard, Trumbull County Mayor, thanks to Julie Green. I'm hoping more townships and cities of Trumbull County would reach out to me. We do have a lot of cabinets and chairs, if we could donate them, by all means, I have them to give away.
Very good. Number thirty-four, to remove from table, uh, Commissioner's meeting agenda under the date of January twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, to enter into a water service agreement with the city anniles of Trumbull County's Howland Public Water System and the Mineral Ridge Public Water System. Agreement shall provide the terms for bulk water supply for both systems located in Howland and Weatherford Township, in a small service area in southern Des Moines Township. Existing agreement executed on February nineteenth, twenty two thousand and four, uh, is duly recorded, and is set to expire on February eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Agreement shall have a term of ten years, the period of February nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, February eighteenth, twenty thirty-four, with an option to renew, uh, the agreement for an additional ten years upon written notification by the county to the city one year prior to the expiration of the agreement. And a special note, this agreement also stipulates that city anniles will continue to supply, operate, and maintain water infrastructure beyond the municipal limits within the Howland Sewer District Number Nine, the Weatherford Sewer Subdistrict Number Two, and the Weatherford Township Northwest Area, Mud Creek Sewer, uh, Subdistrict. So have we heard from, has, has anyone heard from?
Yes, Commissioner, I, I talked to Darlene St. George last week.
Okay.
Uh, she wanted to call and, uh, reiterated to me that they did have their attorney look the contract over.
Mm-hmm.
They are fully okay with everything as it's written, and she said that, uh, we can go ahead and move forward without, without any objection from her or Howland Township. Uh, she asked if she needed to be here, she would be. I told her, I said, you know, the, as long as she gave the blessing, we're, we're good with that.
Yeah.
So she was gonna put something over in writing, that we reviewed it, we're good to go with it, and we'll have that tomorrow, um, before the meeting. But, um, this is, as he proposed, as, uh, Gary proposed it a couple weeks ago, um, they're okay with it, their attorney's okay with it, does not affect anything.
Yeah.
Um, that they thought it might affect.
Much ado about nothing.
Much ado about nothing. But they did, they did get a chance to review it, and they, uh, apologized for the delay. It took their attorney a week to do it, and then we didn't have a meeting last week. Um, I'm sorry for backing you up on that, Gary, with that, but they, uh, they're, they're totally okay with it, and go ahead and move forward.
Okay, very good. Number thirty-five corresponds to that and is the approval, uh, or denial, whatever we want to do. Uh, thirty-six is to authorize the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners to join with Trumbull County Prosecuting Attorney to file an application with the Trumbull County Court of Calum Please for the appointment of Thomas Nader from the law firm of Nader Nader. We discussed this already, we actually went through that, I'm sorry. Uh, that's for the, the highway engineer to retain. Uh, we talked to, uh, our attorney that we will, we will, uh, be, be, um, retaining and, and agenda is number thirty-seven, so that's been covered.
I guess with that, though, Nick Coggins, need, grab a microphone real quick. Um, you weren't here, but you got a chance to meet attorney in the hallway. Are you okay with the representation of, of the gentleman we had here representing us and you guys and the Kimberly Clark stuff as far as planning commission goes?
Nick Coggins, Trumbull County Clinician. Um, I did not actually get to speak to the attorney in the hallway.
Okay.
Um, but I, I know of this law firm, um, they're gonna have practicing attorneys that are familiar with development. It's, um, not that every law firm's the same, but having law firms that are gonna be dedicated to the project, you know, there's gonna be legal things that come up and down, and we normally work very well with Mr. Danzo here and his staff, um, and the rest of the prosecutor's office, that, uh, on most of those things, this being a much larger project, there should be, you're gonna need hands on deck when, when it comes to, uh, there's gonna be a lot of hurry up and wait. We're gonna have nothing, they're gonna wait for board approvals on anything, and then as soon as. So it's, it's gonna need some, um, legal action taken very quickly. So having any kind of representation
We did do our due diligence and he came recommended from the Port Authority. And as he explained to us earlier, he was a part of the very first jet in the state of Ohio and his partner helped write it. So they've been on this since day one back in the eighties. So I feel very comfortable with, with retaining them.
Okay, number thirty-eight. Receiving place on file November third, November and December twenty twenty-three, monthly financial reports for the Trumbull County Tourism Bureau. The standard, number thirty-nine is reaching liquor permits as stated there. And number forty, request the Board of County Commissioners examine the circumstances set forth in O R C five 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 three dot O two and have found satisfactory established resolution by remaining, by remaining six hundred Allison Avenue, six hundred feet of dead end of Allison Avenue, beginning at the center line of Woodside Drive and extending east six hundred feet to the end of pavement in the Champion Township Road System for the public in bands and welfare in accordance with said law. The Trumbull County Engineer has submitted a letter of examination Monday, February fifth. In the note, twenty twenty-four, the Champion Township Board of Trustees voted unanimously to amend the request to accept the six hundred feet of the dead end portion of Allison Avenue into the county highway system in accordance with the law as stated. So this is just, I mean, this came before us with Allison Avenue as far as that, that six hundred feet that would be accepted into dedication for the dedicated road for the county. I see no problem with it, I mean.
Yeah, when it was on previously, I believe they footage.
Okay. Is that what it was?
Yes.
Okay. So this is amending it for the correct footage basis. Another six hundred feet. Okay, and that completes our agenda. We'll open it up to questions, any questions?
Before, before we do that, two, two things I wanted to go over. First of all, Julie, and Commissioner, you may be a part of this too. It seems they've come through a resolution with the educational highway dispute and that'll be something for us, we're going to entertain the next meeting possibly of road dedication or from what we understand, the attorneys worked out the bugs with that, that that's going to be a done issue soon?
So we routed it in December. Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning, sorry about that. We routed it through our regular planning process in December. We received a letter back from all entities, most recently from the coming and reporting to Tom Wilson, who represents the Planning Commission and Commissioners, that his understanding that it's amenable and they will sign off on the final roads. And so next steps are, I believe, Mr. Wilson about everything to have based on the agenda we're considering. They explained that it should be here. Also mentioned, he wanted to attend this morning's session, but had to say he would be available tomorrow. I don't know if that was confirmed.
But it's on our agenda for tomorrow?
No.
He can come to next week for a session.
That would be better. I don't think there's any place for him tomorrow.
No.
But thank you for doing that. This is something that's been hanging over my head since before I got here and it seemed like a pretty easy process once we got the attorneys together.
Right, right. Okay, Commissioner, you have another?
Uh, yeah, the only other thing is we do have a letter here from Dawn Incorporated, or I'm sorry, from Warren Board of Education opposing the enterprise agreement. And we had one of the Warren Councilmen here, he's left, but they were supposed to address that. I don't know what happened there. Nick, do you know?
Nick Coggins, Trumbull County Planning Commission. Yes, when the Commissioners did review it for approval, you requested it be sent back to Warren City Council because of that collateral that was on Section two hundred payroll. It's unfortunately because of revised code, it's not as simple as just taking it back from, we had to reproduce the fourteen calendar day notification to the school districts for when it would be considered. Warren City Council will address that tomorrow night. It is potential that it may be a first reading. We are still having our public hearing next Wednesday. I will not submit for it to be on your agenda for approval unless Warren Council submits for approval. I understand that the Board did, or is objecting to it. I was told because of some of the numbers that they received, some of the numbers that I was told, again, this is hearsay or not hearsay, but secondhand, the numbers they were told sounded a lot larger than anything we've estimated. So I believe that there's some misinformation regarding that. I was also under the impression that, I believe it was Little Gray School District revoked their objection to it. But Liberty Council will, or I'm sorry, Liberty Council, Warren City Council will address that tomorrow night at the regular scheduled meeting at five thirty.
Wait on what, what Warren City Council does and that'll determine how we move forward, probably.
Yes.
Nick, can you check the figures again? Because last time when they were here, they were over a million. And then, then it was two hundred and some thousand, now I hear it's four hundred thousand at the end for employees.
Correct.
So it went back from fifty thousand dollar a year job back up to hundred thousand dollar a year job between the things. So we just want to make sure we get the correct numbers for both entities so we don't have this problem again.
The numbers that you have on this new are absolutely accurate. That two hundred and sixty thousand was a conservative estimate based on four and a half jobs. Because of the opposition, the owner of Dawn Incorporated has gone back and found the exact figures that they paid similar job descriptions in office. So four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars is exactly accurate for the exact four and a half positions that they're currently employing and will be accurate for the four and a half positions they plan to employ based on the expansion. So the numbers in the new agreement at four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars annually for four and a half positions is the exact calculations from the company.
Thank you. All right. Anything else, Commissioner, or open it up?
We have, we have a guest behind you, Commissioner.
Oh, yes.
We've been waiting very patiently behind you.
Yeah, but it's good to see, oh, see, I don't think I need that.
Don't give him a money.
I don't think I need that. Hey, I've got a lot of good people, Gary New Brown, Martha Yoder, Alex, first time I've actually been in the same room as you, Bill Dancel, John Gargano, Julie Green. Guys have a lot of people doing a lot of good work. I am a, an advocate for transportation and probably know more about the transportation up, bragging about it because I have to use it. So since two thousand and eight, I've been actively watching this. I just want to say, I think for the first time, Warren City Council or Warren City in itself with the Trumbull County Commissioners actually came together and come up with something that they are collaborating with on the W R T A project. I think that's, you might think that's small, but just working together is very, very good. And I, I think it's a start, I really do commend you guys for that. The problem, and I don't want to get, I could talk about this for a while, but Denny Lloyd, Commissioner Malloy, asked why the Transit Board was disband. That's along, there's a lot of things. Michael, are you still here?
I'm still here.
Yeah, the Transit Board went down for a lot of reasons. One, because nobody was working together. Two, because the Transit Board was enacted because none of the Commissioners really wanted to get involved with transportation. None of them knew enough about transportation. They, they put a board in and we used our best resource at the time, Terry Thomas, and he was going to give them all the answers they needed. Well, that was where the problem come, because the board was set up for him. When the board, and the, the problem that I had from the January thirty-first meeting was the board, it was dysfunctional at times. It was very much of a debacle, but when Commissioner Frenchco actually called out hardworking people, Martha Yoder, Michael Salamoni, me, Marlene Rose, there, there were some people that really were working very, volunteering very hard, not for pay, to try to oversee this thing and get it done. Until the Commissioners and the Commissioners appointed every board member. So if it was a debacle, they have to take a look in the mirror. These things got to be worked out. And right now, I'm bringing all these up so it doesn't happen again. So we can move forward and we can try to get something. But I am really upset being called, saying that the board was so dysfunctional and everybody was in with the contractor and we were trying to go ahead and increase our profit margin. The board had no money. The board had zero money. We had nothing. And here is the problem. Probably why the board was disband, because me and Morrow had a conversation. I said, you guys need a plan. And what he has stated at that last meeting is true. F T A and O D O are willing to work with us. Yes, they want regionalization. That does not mean joining W R T A. We need a plan for Trumbull County. And I, I know people that don't need a ride. It's not important to. But everything is important, this is all connected with us. The water lines, whether it's a rose, whether it's a board of elections, this is all Trumbull County. We got to do this all right together. And I really think I would like an apology for that because if I've worked that hard and you disrespect somebody that is loyal to the county and trying to do their best, that's a slap in the face. And I, I just had to say that. And with Michael, everything he's doing, trying to pull this all together, he needs you, but you need him because transit will not go forward if we do not have an administrator. That right there, that guy has the power and then he, but he needs to work with you guys. All I got to say.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments, Carl. Again, that was before me, I haven't had a chance to really work with you, but I do appreciate the service you did provide and all of the board members. And there were some comments that were made in past meetings that I totally disagree with and I thought were out of line. And on behalf of the rest of the board, I apologize for you being singled out with some other board members as being even called as corrupt. And I, I see that in no way, shape or form.
And, and one thing, Denny, I think you're trying to get on board with all this. I've asked you for a couple of things as Commissioner, to reach out to Michael, to reach out to Diane, and to reach out to Dean Harris. The only one you haven't done is reach out to Dean Harris. And at that last board meeting, you stated that you've never met him and you don't know. You guys had an appointment and for problems that you've had, you had to cancel. Dean's a very shy guy. If you guys want Dean to go ahead and pick both of you up and have you shake hands, I'll be glad.
We might need that little kick in the butt there, Carl, because right now it's, it's, yeah, I'm
It's just, it's just
I'm here, my phone.
We have, you're here and he's there, okay? Make an effort, please. The more you know the players that are out there, that's one thing I, I, if you really want to know some things, I got the facts, I got them in my computer and I mostly got them in my head as far as the board going down in, in August of twenty twenty-one. I, I will remind Michael, I will remind my Morrow and I'll remind you respectfully, okay? Not to make it bad, but not make the same damn mistakes.
Thank you, Carl.
I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you.
Always been an advocate for transit, probably our most vocal and passionate. Carl, we thank you for all your service, that's for sure. Those, those comments were out of line.
And they, they, and I'm not thinking about just for me. Martha Yoder has been scrutinized and she was on that board. Martha, and the fact Nikki said she's been to all the board meetings, I don't think Nikki started coming to a board meeting till about maybe two thousand seventeen. It couldn't be giving her too much credit, two thousand eighteen, when she got put on the senior level thing. I've been board member since early two thousand sixteen and an advocate at every board meeting. And the board was broken from the get-go because, and Mr. Thomas is a hell of a businessman. He was a little bit too controlling and the first two chairmans bowed out. James Lloyd, the attorney, the first chairman, then Glenn Holmes, the mayor of McDonald, bowed out shortly after because of, of there was, the way it was run. It was bad in the water from the start. People told me not to get involved. I said, I just can't stand by and, and watch this happen. My eyes were a little bit better, but a, a blind man could see what was going on. But thank you. And either you guys both know, if you have a question and you want to be informed and get information that is closer to the truth, I don't know if I know everything. I bet I know more than anybody in this room about it and I'll, I'll take, I'll take that's on that.
Thank you, Carl. Well said.
Very well.
Anyone else with a comment, question? Scott, we'll move on to ARPA.
Real quick before ARPA, yes, Otter Deodor. Really quick before ARPA, I did give you a little dog license update there too. And we're going to do our drawing today for the January licenses, I have that with me. We're going to draw two. Just to give you the numbers there, that we sold four thousand five hundred four licenses in December, four thousand four hundred three licenses in January. Those numbers don't include the numbers from our vendors. So all the vendor sales are still out there. We'll get those at the end. And then just for reference, our total for the twenty twenty-three license sales was fifteen thousand four hundred thirty-two. So let's just give you that. I have the drawing we'll do after I get done with the ARPA stuff.
I got my nice purple tag for alcohol.
Good deal. We should, you need to, you need to get a picture of that so I can put it on our thing. I have pictures of doggies too, those are always, doggies are always most popular.
A hot mess.
Sure, sure, I'll do that.
We're all a hot mess.
Take a minute. Well, you can interrupt me when I, when you're ready for me. So approvals and updates, Attorney Rogers currently has six requests pending. We have not gotten anything from her. The Gerarda ambulance request received, was received and added to the maybe sheet as well as to the Commissioner's drive. Shara also received two requests from the Sheriff's Office, one for body cameras at two hundred eighty-four thousand, two hundred forty dollars, the other for Marx radios at one thirty, one hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars, seven thirty-seven sixty-seven. They've been added to the maybe sheet and the Commissioner's drive. Shara requested an invoice from the attorney on two two twenty-four. I have a typo there and we have not received any response. We, well, I take that back. We received an email response, but we have not received an invoice. We already talked about the amended resolution for the land bank, the Wayne Building. I have the rewritten request from Mespetania. It's on the Commissioner's drive. What I needed to know is where do you want it in line for review by legal? So this is one that was frozen money. And in the blue on your sheet, you're looking at the wrong one. On the more colorful sheet. All right, so this was, Mespo was denied, we froze that money. And then she rewrote it. So I just need to know where you want me to put it in line.
Right where it is, I think, right?
Oh, so, so you want it next?
Yeah.
Then after what, after the gold one says. All right, I will do that.
Now, I know I've said this in the past and I've been contacted, but I keep getting contacted. I don't see it on here. Lordstown, did they submit some?
Yes, they did, but it's on the maybe sheet.
Okay, all right, very good.
I have that, I have it on the maybe and it's, and it, it's in the drive too. So if you want to look at the requests, they're all in the Commissioner's drive.
Thank you, thank you.
I put the, the updated allocated and promise spreadsheet as well as this, the yes sheet. And then I have that mini little spreadsheet for you. Shara wanted to talk to you, I assume, about the accountant.
If she's listening, maybe.
If she's listening, Shara.
Come on in.
Come on down. So this hasn't changed very much from the last update. I just moved the, the one request that we had the amendment on, or the, I'm sorry, the resolution and agreement on last time that was added. And we put that in the allocated promise. So the numbers haven't really changed. We just kind of moved things from the allocated, to the allocated promise from the yes sheet. So the number, the bottom line, no, it hasn't really changed. If we're, when we're waiting for Shara, we want to do she's coming, I'll get her, all right, I'll wait. I want to get out of here, can you tell? Talking like an auctioneer over here.
I just wanted to bring the touch base with everybody on the accounting situation. I'm not sure everyone is aware that, oh, I'm sorry, Denny. I'm not sure everyone is aware that the accountant helped me with the spreadsheet. He's not privy to just all the details. He's working from our munish reports, which I have to email him, send them off, and he compiles everything together. So he's taking a guess on some of the projects, I feel like, and he combines some things that should not have been combined. Unbeknownst to me, I get the report, I get the Excel spreadsheet at four twelve on Monday. It is due by midnight on Tuesday. I've had zero time, so needless to say, the report was late. I don't roll with late. So I've talked to Martha and I've talked to Alex. Initially, I, I would just wanted to take over what he was doing, but I've gone through our agreement with them and they are willing to do more than just this, you know, the Excel spreadsheet. I can maintain that myself, which I'm going to, if everybody's okay with it, because I know the projects, I make them up and I put them on, I would prefer, that way I can stay on top of it and I can start reporting the minute the portal opens up. I only have thirty days from when that portal opens up and he got it to me the day before due. I, I don't have that kind of time, so.
And just to clarify, when she's talking about her spreadsheet, that's her spreadsheet for compliance. So it has the U I D and all the information that she has to do, has to report and it's for money that's actually been spent.
Yes, yes, it's a spreadsheet.
Just to under- so you understand, it does get a little confusing to try to convert a munis report to what I, you know, what I give you on here, the allocated, I do, um, what we've paid and what we've.
Yeah.
encumbered in, Gary's not here. No offense to Gary, but you know, there's, sometimes there's like seven different names for each project and, and you gotta decipher. When I go to do this, when I go to update this every couple of weeks from munis, it's like, oh, what is that again?
Yeah. So it, it is a little convoluted, so I feel like once I'm creating the projects, if I go in and update that at that moment, I go update the, the spreadsheet, I'm, I'm gonna stay on top of it a lot better than just waiting till the last day. I can't, I can't function like that.
If I had to do my updates quarterly, I would be pulling my hair out.
It's horrible.
Cause I have, I do it every couple of weeks.
I can officially tell you guys, it is bad. It is really, really bad.
I don't go near you when you're doing that.
And, and, but, none of us do. If I have, if I have thirty days to do it and, and maintain compliance, we're good. But what the agreement states, and I was initially thinking we should just not pay them, but they're willing to do like when we are getting recordings back from, they're willing to help us out when we have to have some of these grant participants, as we call them, come back to us with a report, they're gonna be able to help us with that.
Right.
So if I can take over the small, minute stuff and give him the, the big stuff, I think that's gonna work better. And just an FYI, we only ever need thirty days written notice to Ernst and Young to just say, we no longer need your or want your services and vice versa.
And I think, um, now that you've looked at it and realized it, I agree with Shara. Uh, we just wanted to make sure we came before.
Right.
You guys said that we had your approval to do it this way. Um, another thing that we really need to get on with him, did you, when you looked at the agreement, did you see what their billing policy was?
It's supposed to be monthly. I've never received a bill and I've been begging for bills.
I think you need to absolutely do that again and if you need.
Uh, they're going to, yeah.
If you need my little stamp of approval on the end of it to make it sound a little more official, I'll, I'll be glad to use that.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm not sure and he keeps saying, we're going to bill you, we're going to, okay, cause I, I ask. I'm like, I'd love to stay on top of it, not get a two hundred thousand dollar bill.
Yeah, not to, not to offend the accountants in my office, but my, from my personal experience as a business person, accountants are the worst to bill.
Well, I, I think I'm starting to see that. I was like, I've been asking, we've been dealing with them since two thousand and twenty-two.
I know, maybe attorneys are worse.
Yeah, I've asked, I've asked Baker DuBacar as well for that.
And I mentioned that and I mentioned we haven't gotten anything. We did get a response. We got, oh, I'm on it or something like that.
And, and that was the end of that.
And that was more than a week ago, yeah.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm just kind of like, I, I, yeah, I'm trying to, I'm, you know, maintain a little bit of, like, let's stay on top of the box, not get down in the box. Let's just keep rolling.
Well, and I think for both of them, we need to be knowing how much of that two fifty that we've allocated.
Cause we've allocated a total of five.
Right, for both, right.
Yeah.
And so we need, two fifty each. We need to know that because that, we can, you know, i- are we gonna go more than that? Are we gonna be less than that? As we're planning, we have some of these smaller projects too, we wanna, we wanna know where we're at.
Right, right, for sure.
This is good.
I will, I will email again and I will ask for an update from Baker DuBacar and I will also email.
Shara and Martha are two superheroes. Keep them all, they're a good team.
Thank you, Carl.
Please try, Carl. Good to see you, honey.
Good to see you. Good to meet you guys.
Goodbye, Carl.
Thank you, Carl.
Eric, take care.
Thank you.
All right, Danny, I might as well shake your hand since I never shake.
Okay, come on in.
Okay, he's coming, he's coming.
He's coming, he's coming. He's a big guy.
Next one, people come to you.
It is.
You guys take care of it.
Goodbye, Carl, as usual. Always glad to do it for you.
Eric's got a pad open for the door.
All right. Shara, are you done?
I am done. You guys don't need me anymore.
All right, I need, I need some people to pick the names.
Oh, okay.
Emma Kerr, Emma Kerr, and so she'll get a, a twenty-five, a certificate for a twenty-five.
Awesome.
Ooh.
Is it Kerr or Kerr?
I think it might be Kerr. I don't know. I've seen it, I've heard it pronounced correctly.
I don't.
K E R R.
Is it Kerr?
And we'll let them, we'll send it out today or tomorrow.
Emma Kerr. The owner of one fifty-eight Kennelworth. Kidding. Where the dog complaint came from.
It's, uh, Fanny Neil, Michael Hirschberger. We got the.
Oh, I think, I think.
Thanks, um.
Thank you.
That's all right.
Okay, uh, I think that'll do it. Any other questions or comments? Scott?
Motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Sean. Uh, Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. Uh, where, where are we at with the, the thought of acquiring this lot over here for additional parking? Where are we at with that?
So I know that, uh, there was talks, initial informal talks with Mr. Velezky there, um, that, that have kinda stalled out. Well, it's our fault. We have to put it out for bid. We've, and we're, and we need to get the, we need to do that. We need to work with our, our prosecutor, we need to work with the clerk and get the bid out that we are looking for parking. And then Mr. Velezky will have the opportunity to bid on it and so will the gentleman, um, with the Y.
That's right.
Uh, Mr. Thompson and his group.
Yes.
Uh, for the thing. So we need, we need to figure the formalities of that happening so we can do that. Cause right now those lots are empty. People are still walking a long ways to get here. The weather's been somewhat decent right now, but they could turn in a moment's notice and it really doesn't matter. I mean, there's a lot of older people that have to park absolute way in the back and then walk all the way up to the front. So we need to, we need to work on that ASAP.
Just, just a Martha Yoder, Trumbull County auditor, just clarification. We're not acquiring the lot.
Well, I mean, we're, yeah, direct, yeah.
It's a lease. It, it, it would be a lease, not a, an ownership, so.
Right, on both of them, you know, that's where we just need to look where, I, I think the bid had to state something of we're looking to acquire parking and then have them bid out whatever it is, what they have to offer and what the price is. And then we, you know, that's something that the prosecutor's gotta figure out the exact wording of what we need. But we need to officially ask Phil to please do that ASAP so we can get the ball rolling on that before either owner changes their mind and goes in a different direction and we don't have that opportunity anymore. They both are interested in bidding now, but we need to open the bid process.
Would either owner be willing to negotiate a price for the property?
As far as the sale?
Mm-hmm.
No, no, cause they're gonna need it over there when they have the apartments a year from now. So that's only a one-year lease.
I mean, how about this one?
The other gentleman, he said he wants to retain the rights to it because he owns all the rest of it all the way to the, uh, old funeral home and he's building a, uh, antique store. Uh, he really didn't wanna part with selling the property or piecing the property out. He wants to lease it and, but he is willing for a long-term lease. He's willing to do a long-term one.
I, I did notice it's, it's roped off, not being used, it's just sitting there.
And that's for insurance reason why they, they don't want us to park there on their property and then they're responsible.
But, uh, the parking's not getting any better out there. It is a long walk for some, all the way from the back and, uh, very convenient to have that right there. And I hate to miss the opportunity to get it when it's so convenient. Uh, another question I have is what can the board of commissioners do to help with the litter problem and the, um?
The what problem?
The litter problem, the garbage. It's, it's everywhere. I mean, especially this time of year, things are not growing, so you can really see it everywhere.
Yeah.
This is really the best time of year to wax.
We have different litter grants that we have, as you know, we have a joint, um, district with Georgia County, the, the Georgia Trumbull Solid Waste District. We do have different grants that we provide and we used to have an officer that would go around and do that and it was paid by a grant. On top of his duties that he already did on, he worked out an agreement with the city of Warren and the sheriff's office at one time. Um, but those grants have gone by the wayside unfortunately. We do still have litter grants and, um, can hook you up with our director out there and she can talk a little bit about that.
I think that's something too where maybe we as commissioners could just put out a request and make awareness out there for civic organizations that are always looking for community service projects, working with the judges, things like that, to clean up areas. We have to delineate what specific area, not just the whole county, like with the Causeway, Mosquito Lake. We do have a program with a volunteer group and with the judge in Central District Court, where he'll assign prisoners to clean up the Causeway area and the Lakeshore.
The trial's going with it.
And, and so we have that. And when we see the Causeway starts getting bad again, which is usually February, March, April, when the fishermen start there again.
Yeah.
That's when the judge will do some work parties on Saturdays to get the Causeway cleaned up. So that's just a matter of us asking. Um, I've talked to other judges in the county, I've, I've talked to Newton Falls judge. Um, they're willing to do the same thing if we delineate areas in their court jurisdiction where they, we need some people to work off community service hours. They're more than willing to assign them certain days or certain areas to go clean up, to work off fines that they may have with the court or even, uh, people that are in arrears on child support. Family court, there's cleanup programs there the family court can initiate if we ask. And then that's something that we need to bring the awareness up first. I guess it's a good first start, you bringing it up, but now is that time to start thinking about, hey, spring's coming. Let's take pride in our community. It's not as lonely morale in our jobs and, than the growth and the economic health, but, you know, the beautifier community at the same time.
Where, where are you thinking? Where are you seeing the most of it? Just in the downtown area or is?
It's just everywhere. It really is everywhere.
Yeah.
Warren City, Warren Township, it's, it's every area.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's quite bad down, uh, right here.
Harmon. Or, you think it Harmon or North Park?
North Park, north here.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Down the other end, uh, when you get down towards my way, down by Rio, down by Big Mike's.
Yeah.
Where the cars are always getting in an accident there, the four-way, it's, it's really bad down. I don't know if trucks came down through there and stuff blew off or what, but I mean, it's all there. Uh, and even following that out towards Leversburg, there's, I, I don't know if trucks are running around without tarp on or what, but it's just a lot of stuff outside of the road.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not getting any better. And this is the perfect time of year to go at it because it's easier to clean without the vegetation. Once everything grows in, it makes it much more harder to deal with.
Sure. I mean, it's, it's difficult for us because we don't have jurisdiction inside the city or in the, or in the townships. I mean, that sort of thing, we can.
We don't, but it would be good, maybe just a letter to all the judges, um, saying, hey, spring's coming. Please consider unique sentencing.
Warren Muni judges, that's, I mean, obviously for common pleas, I don't think that would be. I think for Warren Muni judges, that'd be an ideal program.
Right.
You know?
And they handle champion, they handle Warren Township, they handle Lordstown.
Right.
Um, you know, then like I said, Central District, Eastern District and Newton Falls, pretty much covers the county.
Right.
If we find the hot, the hot spots that need it, we can request it and, um, it's just, they all have some form of a, uh, probation officer too or a court, um, appointed somebody that oversees their work hours that they have to do. And pretty much every sentence these days is getting community service with it.
Yeah.
So why not make them do something that needs done instead of letting them pick what they wanna do?
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna hook you up with Jennifer Jones, who are director out at, uh, Georgia Trumbull Solid.
And maybe Jennifer can initiate that with the judges and courts and stuff with a little bit of your, your spark.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good idea.
But, but we have a, um, I don't know the exact name of it, it escapes me, but like a beaut- a, a beautification grant that deals with litter control and all that. And we can, we can, I can, I don't know it offhand, but what we're targeting, uh, in our county, but there are certain programs that we're doing, but we can augment that a little bit too.
We don't have a litter control officer with the sheriff's department anymore?
I don't think so, no. That's been done away with. That, that hap- that was done away with probably four years ago. And unfortunately, there was a big to-do because without getting into the nuts and bolts of it, that we, you know, we were, we were contracting with this, with this officer and then we'd see him on contracted hours working other duty, uh, while he was supposed to be doing this and it was just, it fell by the wayside, so. But we have tire pickups, we have a lot of that, um, a lot of those different things. You know, that's a big problem too, especially in Warren Township, um, yeah, gray soil area. There's a lot of areas where there's just not only, they're environmentally bad, but like the, the areas are just old, like these vacated areas with just spare tires. There's nobody, we have spare tire programs, but nobody utilizes them, so then we have to go out and get them.
Yeah, and it's, it's, that has gotten better, I, you know, with having the job waste right over.
Yeah, yeah.
Programs that they run through the year, we're taking tires and the appliances and all that.
Yes, yeah.
It is better than it used to be.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's still bad.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people that dump. I don't know if it's, if it's a matter of they just don't know that these things are available or they just don't care to make the effort to take it all the way in.
Mm-hmm.
Dumping and litter is really bad.
Most of the townships now do a tire day because we can, we do it. We get, there's grants available for that, so the, the townships utilize those grants and have a tire day. Um, in between, at least in Farmington Township, if we call, they'll come out and get it when they're out, when doing roadwork and so they'll grab them. But yeah, you know, out where I live, cause it's the country, people will like, oh, nobody lives here.
Mm-hmm, just dump the.
Dump it to the ditch.
Yep. I think camper tops.
Yeah.
Well, they figure the county will get it.
I have a text in to Jen Jones right now and maybe she can answer some of this.
Anyway, uh, another question. Yeah, I, I, I got a, I got a hit back on the nine-one-one situation. Uh, I heard that call. It was absolutely disgusting. It's disgusting that there's a history of this going on with this commissioner and something's gotta be done. One thing I've learned from attending these meetings is that it's very hard for us, obviously, to keep people at nine-one-one. It's a tough job. Maybe they don't get paid enough and whatever, but to, to sit there and they have to worry about a commissioner of all people, a commissioner calling in and abusing the lines and harassing them and they have to worry about their jobs being on the line? What are we doing here? I would hope that the newspaper would pick up on this and look into this because this isn't a single incident. There's a history here of this, of this abuse and this manipulation of the system.